Okay. So we have quorum. We're going to move to the closed session, action item 9.01. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Prince William County School Board... This one.
Yeah.
There you go. I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize Chairman-at-Large to execute and renew the contract for services to Thomas Balsh, his board of parliamentarian, under terms agreed upon by the school board and Mr. Balsh.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Second by Ms. Trenum. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, unanimous; two absent. Motion passed.
Okay. We'll go to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda. 10.01, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Trenum, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
Next, we move to a motion to certify the closed session. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting on December 12, 2018 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Second by Ms. Trenum. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
This school year, we are kicking off the business of our meetings with a response to community requests to hear more about the good things that Prince William County Public Schools are accomplishing. We are working with the schools and our communications team to spotlight a few of the good news items at these meetings and elsewhere with the term Positively PWCS. Because our presentation tonight is from the Okaquan District, Ms. Lilly Jessie will introduce our presenters.
It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Amy Schott and members of her PTA to this board. And I have to tell you that I have enjoyed being at all the PTA activities in your school. My husband and I really enjoyed when you had the cook-off and we were judges. But this school is active, and I'm not surprised that they received this award. Mr. Schott.
Mrs. Schott. Thank you so much. Good evening, Dr. Waltz and members of the school board. I am Amy Schott, the very proud principal of Rockledge Elementary School, and I'm happy to introduce to you some of my wonderful members of our Rockledge family. With me tonight, I have Mrs. Everett, our assistant principal, Mrs. Roscoe from PTA, Mrs. Aziz on the other side, Mr. Fortson back here, and Mr. Lajin, and Mrs. Simpson, a teacher. I'm really happy to have all of them with me tonight. We also have some of their children with us tonight. We have Larry and Henry, Torren, Zinnia, Eliza, and Ellen, so they are joining us to celebrate with us tonight. So to tell you a little bit more about the National PTA School of Excellence Award, it is a recognition program that supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools to enrich the educational experience and overall well-being for all students. Knowing that Rockledge has a long history of strong family-school partnerships and a genuine commitment to continuous improvement, our previous PTA President Tracy Leonard encouraged our PTA Board to apply for the National PTA School of Excellence Award.
As part of the application process, the school commits to surveying parents several times during the school year to identify areas of focus based on stakeholder input. The National PTA provides a roadmap to assist in identifying and improving areas of focus. Strengthening school-family partnerships is at the core of the National PTA School of Excellence Program to foster our school's success and continued improvement. The National PTA provides concrete steps to help our PTA move to the next level of success in specific areas. Staff, parents, and students work together to follow the PTA's roadmap to excellence, which helps schools achieve success with each national standard. PTA's national standards for family-school partnerships were developed with national experts and reflect the research on how parents, schools, and communities can work together to support student achievement. They include the following. Standard one, welcoming all families into the school community. Families are active participants in the life of the school, and they feel welcomed, valued, and connected to each other, to school staff, and to what students are learning and doing in class.
Standard two, communicating effectively. Families and school staff engage in regular, two-way, meaningful communication about student learning. Standard three, supporting students' success. Family and school staff continuously collaborate to support students' learning and healthy development both at home and at school, and they have regular opportunities to strengthen their knowledge and skills to do so effectively.
Standard four, speaking up for every child. Families are empowered to be advocates for their own and other children, to ensure that students are treated fairly and have access to learning opportunities that will support their success. Standard five, sharing power. Families and school staff are equal partners in decisions that affect children and families, and together inform, influence, and create policies, practices, and programs. Standard six, collaborating with community. Families and school staff collaborate with community members to connect students, families, and staff to expand learning opportunities, community service, and civic participation. National PTA's goal for the School of Excellence Program is to enrich the education experience and overall well-being of students by forming family-school partnerships that leverage community resources to strengthen family engagement and contribute to continuous school improvement.
As you can see from the photos, Rockledge staff and families continue to work in partnership to exceed and achieving the previously mentioned standards, address our own school's areas of focus, and provide a world-class education for our children. The picture slideshow you are enjoying has highlights from some of our many events and efforts. Engagement and support examples include biannual community picnics, Rising Kindergarten Student Playdates, family engagement nights at the Rockledge Library, Bingo Night, Talent Show, Providing a Butterfly in Pollinator Garden, Wellness SOL Assessment Information Nights, Bullying Prevention and Internet Safety Events, Science Fair, Curriculum-Related and Character-Building Assemblies, Funding the School's Activity Bus to Allow for After-School Learning Opportunities, Applying for Grants to Fund Enrichment Activities, Healthy Cooking Club, a P-E-A-T-C Parent Advocacy Information Session on the Topic of Your Voice Matters, It's Key to the Process of Empowering Parents to Engage, Kindergarten to College, Dad's Watch, Lunch with a Scientist, Collaboration with Advisory Council, Community-Wide Fun Run, Eagle of the Month Lunch, Student-Led Conferences, Dad's Breakfast, Spelling Bee, STEAM Events, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, Winter and Summer Break Book Giveaways, and Community Giveaways which provide families with many basic needs.
If you are interested in learning more about our school-family partnership and efforts, we invite you to visit the Rockledge Facebook and Twitter pages, or join us for our monthly meeting on the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. Our events are consistently well-attended due to the effective homeschool communication, school-family partnership, and maintaining a welcoming school. All our students win with this level of engagement.
Congratulations and thank you to all who have contributed to our efforts in achieving the National PTA School of Excellence Award, as well as the Prince William County Schools' School of Excellence Award. We are proud to share that Rockledge is the only Prince William County school to achieve this honor of receiving the National PTA School of Excellence Award. And we would be happy to support other schools in reaching their goals related to family engagement. We appreciate the invitation to share our Positively Prince William County Schools' news, and we wish to thank all employees and families who work in collaboration to support student success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, and thank you for the lovely presentation.
Thank you very much. Every time I go to your school, there are parents everywhere. I hope you share some of your ideas with other principals, and thank you so much, and thank you for being you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie.
One more round of applause. Thank you. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. There will be first a moment of silence at the request of Rabbi Shmuel Perlstein of the Shabbat of Greater Gainesville... I'm sorry, Greater Gainesville, Manassas, at the request of Mr. Gil Trenum, Brentsville District. Is the rabbi still with us? Please, sir.
It's my distinct honor to stand before you today and share this invocation, possibly the first rabbi to do so. This past week, we celebrated the holiday of Hanukkah. Hanukkah recalls the story that took place when a small group of Maccabees refused to give in to the oppression of religious freedoms and challenged the governing power. The climax of the story is when the Maccabees regained control of Jerusalem and won back the freedom to perform the services in the Holy Temple. They are devastated to find that all the oil for the menorah had been tampered with and made impure. They desperately search for a pure jug of oil and discover one small jug of pure oil. Knowing it would take eight days until new oil would be acquired, they choose to light with the little bit of oil they had. Although it was only enough to last one day, God performed a miracle and the oil of the menorah burned for eight days, hence the eight days of Hanukkah. The word Hanukkah means dedication, as the Maccabees rededicated the temple. What is less known is that the root of the word Hanukkah comes from the Hebrew word hinuch, which means education. This was an important educational moment. You see, after years of being unable to light the menorah on lacking pure oil, the Jews would have been allowed to light with the impure oil which was available. But to them, this was an important educational moment. The purity of the oil symbolizes moral integrity and the spirit of the law which they fought so hard to retain. So when it came to light the menorah, they refused to settle for impure oil. This is why they searched until they found that one jug of pure oil. They were teaching their children and all future generations that we don't compromise on morality, and we do not do what is right, and we do what is right even when it is challenging. We act with integrity even when we can find excuses to compromise on our values. Upon seeing such dedication, God performed the Hanukkah miracle, and this is the education which is at the heart of the Hanukkah story. Today's society faces many challenges, challenges of addictions, challenges of intolerance. The best preventative measure we can take is how we choose to educate our children. While Bava Tzoreb, Rabbi Schnerson, taught that education should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation of a career, rather the educational system must pay more attention to building the character with an emphasis on moral and ethical values. I pray that God Almighty endow us with the thoughtfulness and ability to succeed in the awesome task of educating the next generation in Prince William County. May we ignite the creativity, knowledge, and spirit of every one of our youth and do so with pure oil, with pure morals and life guidance, which empowers them to use their knowledge productively and be a positive influence on society. May the Almighty God bless the esteemed members of this board with health and clarity of thought in a manner that benefits all the students they represent. May our intentions remain pure, may our hearts remain pure, and may we find support in our peers knowing that we are working together for this noble endeavor, together representing the great school district of Prince William County. And all those who occupy themselves faithfully to communal affairs, may the Holy One bless them, send blessings and success to their every endeavor, and let us say amen.
if a student can come up, if we have any students here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Do we have any?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Deutsch, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
Okay, great. Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Second.
Oh, second.
Mr. Deutsch, any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
During this time on the agenda, the student representative and alternatives will speak and have an opportunity to introduce themselves and share their interests. First, we'll have Sasan Faraj, our school board student rep from Patriot High School.
Good evening, everyone. In the recent weeks, I visited Hilton High School. I was supposed to visit Stonewall Jackson on the 10th, but it was canceled again due to the snow day. During this meeting with Hilton High School, the SCA and class representatives were all in attendance, making up about half the enclosed cafeteria. The student leaders discussed prominent concerns and observations that they believe the school board should be made aware of. A few board meetings ago, the board had the opportunity to discuss a college fair that was held at Potomac High School. A lot was said on the importance of having a plan. The student leaders at Hilton agree. They believe that students should be learning how to plan for paying off college tuition, room and board, and the other fees associated with attending college during their sophomore and junior year of high school. This timing is highly critical because it gives students the ability to think about plausible choices for college early on rather than think about college decisions during senior year. With more time to choose between feasible college options, students can narrow down their potential colleges list and be ready to begin their application process in the beginning of the year. Beginning a relationship between the college and career counselor during the beginning of the student's time in high school was also requested. This would allow students to begin the college process as soon as possible. Now, a large part of college preparedness is testing preparation. Not all students can afford costly SAT/ACT tutoring, yet this test is a large portion of some college assessment of students' academic potential. The students at Hilton suggested setting aside a structured time for students to begin practicing the SAT or going over practice problems to help review for these big tests. Whether it is an after-school club or non-instructional time, beginning to prepare for these tests is important, and schools should help motivate students to learn while helping the students learn. Now, it wouldn't be a board meeting without some discussion about the budget. Last board meeting, Wilfredo spoke on parking passes. This topic was brought up again by the student leaders at Hilton High School. Students are concerned about the unintended effects of the $100 parking pass fee. Some students are unable to afford it because their parents do not have the ability to pay for it, and therefore the financial burden lies on the students. The students believe that the price for parking passes neglects to take into consideration lower socioeconomic students in those conditions, such as students who must work to help provide for their family, or students who must work to pay off personal expenses. They propose that the prices should either be lowered or that monthly payment plans should be available and advertised towards students who are unable to pay a lump-sum fee in the beginning of the year. This topic also leads to transparency. It is becoming apparent, as I visit the different high schools within Prince William County, that students believe they should be made aware of how this revenue is allocated in order to understand why the cost is what it is. Students also believe that ESL programs deserve to be prioritized as well. They focused on the necessity to fund more resources for ESL programs in order to help ESL students and the families thereof more efficiently. Although resources go a long way, students believe that people within the ESL program should be better incorporated with the general population because ESL students feel isolated from the rest of the schools. It's important to ensure interaction between everyone because it allows students to learn about different perspectives within their community and ends the split between the two groups. Lastly, students brought up educational environment. One of my biggest struggles as a student representative is student apathy. On a school-by-school basis, students feel as though their voice is not taken into account, even though there is an overwhelming support for any given issue. This stems from administrative involvement within schools. The students believe that setting up appointments to meet with their administrators, or at least for the SCA representatives, to meet with administrators should be easier in order to foster communication between the student body and the administrative team to ensure that change, interaction of perspectives. On a different note, I am replanning the day I will meet with Stonewall High School, hopefully third time's a charge, and I'd like to charm. I'd like to spend my last minute talking about the Student Summit on January 5th that will be held in conjunction with the Parents Summit held at Hilton High School. This summit is titled "A Student's Conversation on Mental Health." There will be three different sessions surrounding the topic of mental health. Wilfredo, Annabelle, and I will each co-lead separate sessions with the help of the staff from the mental health team. This summit is open to juniors and seniors. Students will be given a platform to voice their opinion on how mental health is addressed through the different sessions. The link to register is on the Prince William County website and has been distributed to the high schools. I encourage that principals, teachers, staff all tell their students to sign up as there is a cap of 120 students, and it has begun to fill up. Again, the summit will be at Hilton High School from 8:00 to 11:30 a.m. on January 5th. We are looking forward to it, and as always, students can reach me at my Prince William County, give an email, spell it out, F-A-R-A-J-S-A-19@PWCS.edu.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll be moving to citizens' comments. It looks like we have actually 14 people, so we'll do them all. Levin signed up in advance, so for all of you that have signed up, I won't call your name, just come up to the front. And I guess I'll call your name. Bob Weir, Claire Lancaster, Charles Hyman, Riley O'Casey, Tara Turner, Sonia Dorlan, Richard Jesse, Aurora Hurtado, Barbara Brooks, Lorena Clark, Mike Orwendy, Haddock, and then the ones at the door, McDuffie, Julius Jackson, and Kate Olson Flynn. So we'll do them all. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Bob Weir.
Evening, Bob Weir, 6853 St. Paul Drive, Haymarket. Here again tonight to speak about citizens' time policy that you're going to consider for vote tonight. I sent you guys the 2016 AG's opinion on similar things, and I appreciate those of you that responded having received it. I would suggest you're moving in the right direction, but you're not quite there yet. You still need to fine-tune the policy and ensure that all the rules are content-neutral. I would also point out that the school board and staff are paid to be here, residents such as myself are not, especially those of us that have sat here for an hour after the meeting was supposed to have begun. When you assumed office, you assumed the responsibility of listening to the constituents, complaints, concerns, all of that, and those are the people that elected you and the people that fund the school division by and large. If you don't feel compelled to entertain all of their comments prior to the business at hand of each meeting, well, then I would suggest that many residents aren't going to feel compelled to return you to office next year. Something to consider. The second thing I wanted to talk about was the impact statements. Two months ago, four meetings ago, you rightly deferred several impact statements. Two months and four meetings later, they haven't appeared back on the agenda. They're not yet rescheduled, and those applications are going before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Supervisors. By not providing your input, you are potentially leaving proffer dollars on the ground, several hundred thousand dollars last week, and millions more to come. I understand the failure with regard to the previous impact statements and the problems that were the basis of those failures, but you have a second round of failures here. You have a responsibility to the residents, you have a responsibility to the Planning Commission, you have a responsibility to the Board of Supervisors to provide your input. That's not happening, and it's costing all of the residents, or potentially costing all of the residents of the county, and it's something that you guys really need to address and address in a hurry. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire Lancaster?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for your time. My name is Claire Lancaster, 12632 Crabtree Falls Drive, Bristol, Virginia. I'm a student from the Brentsville Turf Grass Management Program, and we're here for our annual visit. We'll be handing all of you a holiday wreath that our students made during our floral design unit as a thank you for all that you do. As we hand these out, we want to take a moment to discuss how much has happened in the past year. To start off, our program has grown exponentially, so much in fact that a second teacher was added to the program. The program has created a name for itself not only within the county but across the country. With the help of a great idea from Mr. Trenum, our students created the first annual Brentsville Turf Homecoming Tour, where we went to different high schools throughout the county and painted unique designs for each school's homecoming game. Students collaborated with other schools to get the product that they wanted, as well as mastering our field painting skills. It was an amazing experience for all that participated. At Brentsville, we've been working extremely hard to maintain the grounds and athletic fields, as well as the grounds at the Knoxville School. Our students have been learning the professional practices through hands-on experiences. Our horticulture classes have worked hard towards the upkeep of our delicate greenhouse for our large spring plant sale. About two weeks ago, we found out that the Brentsville Turf Program received the turf grass industry's highest honor. We were selected as the Sports Turf Managers Association 2018 Football Field of the Year. This national award was selected by a panel of 13 professionals from hundreds of applications. Our application was completed by students with the proper test of the field, as well as a written annual nutrient management plan. This award shows that Prince William County Schools is home to the best and safest natural grass field in the nation. It's our job to carry on this new tradition and bring it to all the schools in the county. Thank you for everything that you do, and we hope that you have a happy and safe holiday season.
Charles Hyman?
My name is Charles Hyman, and my address has been recorded by the clerk. Again, my name is Charles Hyman, and I have been involved in education for 21 years. Of the past 10 years, I've served here in Prince William County Schools. During the 10 years, I have served different positions, JV, Varsity Assistant Men's Basketball Coach, Varsity Girls Assistant Coach, Head Freshmen Football Coach, Head JV Football Coach, and Varsity Assistant Football Coach. While my main position started out as a substitute teacher and then became a teacher assistant. Of these, coaching and assisting teachers are not necessarily my passion. My passion is, has always been, and always will be, the young people. I've seen incredible strides made by leadership towards the success of our students, and I am so proud to be a part of Prince William County Schools. However, I have witnessed some things that have flat-out caused me to weep and really to mourn. I've seen student athletes concussed for wearing outdated helmets. I've seen student athletes endure preventable injuries due to damaged playing surfaces. I have even witnessed gifted student athletes' dreams deferred because of bad judgment of adults, who were not for the... of, uh, of adults, who, were it not for the encouragement and fighting by others, uh, would have turned it all in, he would have given it all up. And yes, forgive me, probably would have taken his life. But it is because of my passion for young people that I am committed to them, to their giftedness, to their future, but most of all, their safety. Our leadership has agreed and stand by the premise that safety for our students is first. It is because of this thought that I stand here tonight and urge you, sir, and I urge you, ma'am, to please, please consider our suggestion and request, uh, in terms of our new field at Woodbridge High School, our new turf field. We did not just come out of the clear blue and decide, hey, this is what we should have as an, our new field. We did what we've always done as coaches. We simply researched, and we researched again. And, and the researches that we, the, the conclusions that we found are not necessarily good for, for, um, for our, our young people. So I know I've overstayed my time, and I, and I pray you forgive me, but it, I, I would like to add that, that some of these findings, you'll find out for yourself in, in, in the future, but they've caused, caused cancer and everything. So thank you so much for your time, and, um, I hope you all can understand where we're coming from. Thank you.
Riley O'Casey?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, board members. Dr. Walts, my name is Riley O'Casey. I'm president of the Prince William Education Association, and my address is on file. Today is Wednesday. What happens every Wednesday? Love it. We wear red. Mr. Trenum never wears red. Why? Because Virginia is the 12th wealthiest state, but ranks 42nd in per pupil state funding. Virginia teachers currently earn more than $9,000 under the national average, ranking 34th in the country. Since the Great Recession, Virginia's state funding of K-12 schools has declined 12% when adjusted for inflation. And after five years on the job, 40% of our teachers are no longer teaching in Virginia schools. However, public school employees across the state received great news yesterday. Governor Northam is proposing, I emphasize proposing, a budget that includes an investment of 268.7 million for K-12 education, of which 88 million is for school employee salaries. This is a huge step in the right direction, so we must not stop. We want what's best for our students, so we must continue to advocate for smaller class sizes and smaller caseloads. This will ensure they are successful. We want the best of the best educating our students, so we must continue to advocate for competitive salaries. Board members, here's how you can help. Yesterday, I sent each of you a copy of the VEA resolution asking for your support by wearing red every Wednesday. Tonight, the PWEA Membership Committee is presenting red surprises for members of the school board, as well as the superintendent's staff. It is a critical time right now. We need everyone on board. We must work together to ensure the General Assembly approves the governor's proposed budget and adequately funds our schools. You don't have to be a member of PWEA or VEA to wear red. Community members, parents, students, board members, Prince William County school staff, this movement is about wearing red to show your support for our students, employees, and education. Members of this board, will you join your colleagues from across the state by supporting the resolution and wearing red every Wednesday? Chairman Latif, may I request that this resolution be placed on the school board agenda for the January 2nd meeting? Is there a school board member who would bring this vote forward? A unanimous vote of support from the Prince William County School Board would certainly go a long way in the General Assembly. Thank you for all that you do, and we wish you a holiday, happy holiday and a restful break.
Thank you. Tara Turner?
Hi there, I'm Tara Turner. My address is also on file. Um, I live in the Okaquan district, and I'm here today to ask for your attention in regards to the boundary meeting, uh, the boundary rezoning for elementary schools. I realize that this zoning does not impact each, each of your districts equally, but at the same time, I want you to know that your votes matter to my neighborhood. I'm here to have a voice for the people who live in the Westridge HOA community. Each of the three plans that's currently on the table divides our one small neighborhood, uh, managed by one HOA, and it sends us to different schools. Please know that many members of our community have reached out to the Boundary Zoning Committee, and the majority of our community has not received responses, so we wanted to be heard, uh, which is why we're taking your time tonight. Two of the plans on the table exclude the condos and apartments that are located inside of the Westridge neighborhood to bus in, um, high-value homes miles down the road that aren't currently zoned for Westridge. This sends a direct message to our children in the lower-income housing of our neighborhood, um, that they do not belong, and that we're not okay with this. That's not acceptable, and we hope that if a plan lands on your desk, um, that you won't find that acceptable either. Please understand that any plan that separates the Westridge community directly affects the school progression of our community of children. By splitting any section of Westridge, you're subjecting our children to a unique school progression of Springwoods Elementary School, then to Woodbridge Middle, then to Woodbridge High School, where peers are then again split by specialty programs. The majority of Springwoods Elementary, uh, children move on to Lakewood Middle School, while our Westridge HOA community would move on to Woodbridge Middle School. This is such a tough time for kids already, and these friendships that they build can often be the difference between a child making positive choices or really detrimental choices. So we hope that you'll keep that at the forefront of your mind. Please also understand that we're a community that looks after our school. Just because we live in, in Westridge, we know we don't own the school, but we're the ones walking with our families at night by the school. We're the ones checking in on the safety of the school, reporting if things are wrong. So we, we know we don't own the school, we really just do care, and we're there, right there in the neighborhood. Um, so please keep our neighborhood children together. It's the right thing to do. Our school is not overcrowded, and this is absolutely achievable. Um, it's critical to our community, and we would appreciate you keeping these concerns at the forefront of your mind as you make your decision when the plans do land on your table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sonja?
Hi.
Sorry.
Um, good afternoon. Thank you, everybody. Ms. Jessie? Hi. She's my, uh, district. I'm Sonia Dorland. I'm, my, um, address is on file. I'm actually here to applaud, um, and I'm proud to be a Viking, um, this, this time around because we are a school of excellence, and I just wanted to boast just a little bit. Mrs. Abney is one of the most caring and supportive principals in Prince William County. Parents and students couldn't wish for someone better. She has been at Woodbridge Senior High School for only two years and has helped us achieve our closed achievement gaps and put our students well on their way to success, and we love her. Our school received the School of Excellence Award this year that past principals at Woodbridge Senior High School have not been able to accomplish since 2003. Yay, Mrs. Abney. We, um, Ms. Abney is the best principal that both students and parents recognize as a wonderful leader. She has been very productive in cheering us on in all efforts in areas that inspire strong character in students that attend. She is someone that has integrity, compassion, and treats everyone with respect. And when you have someone that is committed to make everyone feel included, it shows all across the school like a bright light. Thank you, Mrs. Abney. And also, I have a minute left, so I have a couple more little things on my list. Um, by the way, I ask that you reconsider not to have the crumb rubber, or, yeah, crumb rubber turf field at our high school. Instead, allow companies with organic, safe materials to make bids for our new field, as this will only benefit Woodbridge Senior High School and also the whole county. As you know, Fairfax is also, they're getting rid of the crumb rubber. They're no longer allowing it to be put in because of the effects that it has on some of the kids. It's been formed, um, with the, um, what am I thinking? Help me. With the fours that they have, um, I'm trying to think. Help me out. No, no, no. The reports that they've gained.
You're the person signing up, so you need to continue to s-
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Jessie. And then, okay, well, I'll go on anyways, but please, um, give us, um, you know, organic fields. Also, as you know, the district, um, over in our Okaquan district is going through a lot of changes for the school boundary plan. Plan 2 and 2A would keep the zones 359, 360, 376, and 462 at Old Bridge Elementary, and if you could consider a minor adjustment to also add zone 488, which the projection is only 29 students, to help us keep our school intact. And thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the agenda, somebody I think I know, Mr. Richard Jesse.
Hi, my name is Richard Jesse. I think my wife knows my address. I'm here to talk about the chrome rubber field today, as I've spoken several times. Amy Griffin, who's a star, was a star soccer player and is a coach out on the West Coast, cited in 2015, there were 200 athletes who played on chrome rubber fields that came down with cancer. All those 200, 158 of those students were soccer players. So for you people who play soccer, you might want to think that. And if you are goalie, 101 of the 158 came down with cancer because they fall down and they're on the field constantly. Chrome rubber started with the EPA trying to find a solution for all the tires in this country that go to landfills, was a big problem. So the EPA put out a grant, and they came up with a solution for chrome rubber fields. So when the EPA does a study to convince, to find out if the fields are, uh, good or not, I think there is a, what, what do we call it? A, uh, conflict of interest, perhaps, in their studies. Montgomery County, Arlington County, and Fairfax County have all gone away and will no longer put in chrome rubber fields. Prince William County promised my wife, and I believe promised, um, Mr. Latif, that they would consider, uh, putting in a bid that would allow for both. My wife found out, or actually, I found out because she had to go to a meeting, another meeting, at a meeting that the county decided not to do that, only allowing chrome rubber fields. I hope that we can rescind that order. The board has the power to do so, and I hope that you will consider. A, uh, field is only costs about $185,000 more to put in a healthy field. The delay in putting in, in, there's not a big delay if you want to rescind the solicitation and change the wording from only allowing chrome rubber fields to not allowing chrome rubber field, should not be a big delay in the solicitation. I hope you will reconsider your votes. The board has the power to cancel contract or not issue the contract when it comes to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Aurora Hurtado?
Good evening. Aurora Hurtado, and my address is on the record. I'm a, well, um, my son is a first grader at Old Bridge Elementary. We live less than a mile from our school. When the weather permits, we, we walk to school. We were appalled when we saw that the preliminary Plan 1 for the school boundary would remove us from our school and would transfer us to Lakewood. We take the bus on the corner of our house. We walk three houses and we get to our bus stop. There are no streets to cross, and yet, that would be the boundary for us. That school, that house where we take the bus would still be on the boundary for Old Bridge, and there is no natural boundary, there is no street to be crossed. We would be isolated from the other 11 kids that take the bus there. It is baffling to me that a block where all driveways exist, are facing on the same direction, would be chopped in two. And our initial shock was made worse when we realized we were only a part of a very small area in our neighborhood. Basically, we are planning zone 359, 360, and 376. I followed the bus the next morning, I'm not crazy, I promise you, but I followed the bus the next morning to one other parent, and there are less than 12 students in this area. So moving us from a school where we can walk, where we are part of a bus route that's a total of 11 stops, and we would be chopped to have, have to cross Old Bridge, it made no sense. We are encouraged by Plan 2 and Plan 2A because it puts us back on our school, uh, at Old Bridge, but we also saw that the Planning Committee made efforts to abide by Regulation 264. It allowed more students from other schools to stay at their current schools. So while we support Plan 2 and 2A, we understand that there may be new plans coming up. We want to encourage the Planning Committee and you, when you vote, to look at the plans that keep more communities together, where street blocks are not chopped in half. We understand the challenges of overcrowding, we value the efforts to alleviate it, but we reject any plan that attempts to use our children as static blocks to fill out some demographic or to check some boxes, to fill schools that, you know, are going to be under capacity and move us from a school that, based on Plan 1 or Plan 2, would still be under capacity. So we support Plan 2. I, I don't know how the projections are calculated. My planning zone has eight kids projected. Uh, we are the only one that I know of, and the girl across the street that goes to other school where her mom works, so not a factor on the equation. So your votes on this issue will affect us, and we request that you please, uh, use a common sense approach. Don't divide blocks in, in two where there are no natural boundaries. One quick second, I also stand with, uh, parents who care on the no chrome rubber issue, and I invite all parents that are here from elementary schools to get involved with them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Barbara Brooks?
Good evening. I'm Barbara Brooks, and my address is on file. I'm here this evening to speak as an advocate for the paraprofessional. I worked in this capacity for over 30 years in the Prince William County Schools. Back when the school system had councils for the various professions, I was elected for at least two terms as a representative on the council. I also served on Meet and Confer on behalf of the paraprofessionals when Meg Gruber was president. I feel that these capacities, along with my years of experience, qualify me to speak for those who feel they have no voice. Most paraprofessionals show up and give 100% or more. Wanting the best for the children, like the teachers, they too often work beyond their paid hours and spend money from their own pockets to contribute to the welfare of the classroom. Now, because of the nature of the teaching profession, teachers form a direct relationship with principals. This is not generally true of the paras. If for some reason the classroom partnership is unable to generate or maintain a congenial relationship, the teacher with an established bond with the administration has the advantage if he or she begins a campaign to get rid of the para. Unfortunately, it can involve unfair exaggerations and untruths. On one of these occasions, I worked with a former employee who went through the process of trying to seek reemployment. She had no idea that the teacher she worked with had been carefully engaging in negative comments and complaints against her. She was caught off guard when she was called into the office and presented with the teacher's complaints and totally unaware of her rights, or that there was even a grievance procedure in place. I see that the grievance process has been updated and improved since then, and that is great, but apparently, the process doesn't come into play until those involved have followed the steps toward the solution, uh, within their place of employment. And this is where the employee's notification of their rights needs to begin. The paraprofessional who may be an innocent victim ends up with a poor evaluation or gets put on a behavior plan. When an employee gets called in and put on one of these behavior plans, there are two administrators present. I'm not quibbling with this procedure of protection for principals, but the point is that the employee sometimes lacks the same protection of the presence of a representative at the initial stage of the complaint. Yes, we know there are people who are fulfilling, that, who are not fulfilling their employment obligations, and the school system has the right to remove those who fail to meet them. However, innocent people can be the victims of poor evaluations and loss of employment when they are not apprised of their full, complete rights from the start. I would like to point out that I've also seen this happen to teachers when principals wish to remove them. So on behalf of all employees who find themselves in the midst of a grievance situation, it's simply a matter of having a policy that requires any employee to be given in writing what their rights are at the point in which they are informed of a complaint. I have been able, unable to tell by searching online if there is already a written procedure to protect, uh, employees in the form, before the formal grievance. If not, I ask tonight that you seriously consider putting- If not, I ask tonight that you seriously consider putting into effect a procedure to protect employees at the initial stage of a grievance. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorena Clark.
Good evening, Dr. Walts, Dr. Latif, school board members. I'm Lorena Clark, my address is on file, and I'm a Hilton High School teacher. I'm here today to personally thank Mrs. Satterwhite, Satterwhite, I apologize for that, from the Gainesville district for visiting my classroom on December fifth, two thousand and eighteen for the Leaders Enriching Academics Day lead. The experience was the first one for me, as I've never had a school board member in my classroom before. In my old-school mind, having the administration in your classroom was a bad thing. With this new approach, having administration working with teachers in collaborative ways actually allows us for an understanding of our daily journey with our students. Activities where all points of the education process interact in a direct and meaningful manner should continue to happen and possibly more than just once a year. Mrs. Satterwhite, she modeled the support for the students and teachers during her visit and is always welcome back in my classroom as well as any board member at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike or Wendy Haddock?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mike Haddock, one-two-five-five-nine, Canalever Court in Woodbridge, and I'm here regarding the boundary change proposals. As an active-duty military family, we were stationed here and lived in Lake Ridge four years ago for a time that was much more brief than we had anticipated, but it was definitely long enough for us to fall in love with our home, with our neighborhood, and with the school that we were attending at the time, which was Old Bridge Elementary. So much so that we made a vow to return to this area, and after pulling several strings and calling in some favors, we were able to make that happen this summer, where we returned in July and enrolled our daughter as a second grader at Old Bridge Elementary. We only very recently learned about the boundary change proposals and now are regretfully facing the prospect of having to tell our daughter that despite promises of some stability and consistency in her life, she might be facing the prospect of the third elementary school in as many years. Now objectively, we understand that adjustments need to be made and that a plan has to be formulated. I can tell you that for a lot of us, version one of the proposed plan lacks a lot of credibility. It seems to take things to extremes and doesn't seem to have a lot of methodology behind it. It's a hard sell for me that the solution to alleviate ten to fifteen percent overcrowding in schools results in forty-nine percent to seventy-five percent turnover in some of the schools. It's also a hard sell for me that families that live within walking distance of a school are facing the prospect of being moved to a completely different school somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three miles away. I'm also not in favor of any plans that increase the requirement to transport across or along Old Bridge Road because, as we all know, it's only getting worse as a transportation artery and are not many opportunities to expand its capacity. Now, proposals two and two alpha, we feel are much better from my perspective, but I think more improvements are possible. If indeed the board is willing to talk to the committee about additional plans, I would like to see constraints placed on the board or conditions such as maintaining perimeters around the school for walking distance, minimizing the transportation across and along Old Bridge like we also mentioned. I'd also ask the board to please consider going back to the drawing board if it's necessary in the interest of developing the best plan possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Asher McDuffie.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, boards, board members. My name is Asher McDuffie, one-one-one-one-six-zero-six, Brookway Court, Woodbridge, and I'm coming to speak to you today about the chrome rubber issue at Woodbridge High School. As you've heard from others already, there's a concern about the safety and health of our children on the chrome rubber. I have a concern as a parent. In the research that I've done, I'm also an official and have seen this at colleges as a college official, and they are also addressing, starting to address these concerns outside of this area. As we know, that the other counties in this area, as were labeled, were listed, are also now starting to address this. My concern is that we're not openly looking at other options. When I sat in the meeting as well that Mr. Jesse was at and heard that the contract itself was stating not to look at other options, that upset me as a citizen, and it upset other citizens as well. And I think that it needs to be addressed by this board and looked into because the citizens of this county deserve better from this board and from the contracts folks that make this contract happen. It does not have to be closed off as an option. The health issues that the chrome rubber are going to be stated by EPA research and everything else, I think that what needs to be addressed wholly is when the fields are going to be done, and as I said, other counties are doing it, Prince William should at some point lead the way for this area. We don't lead enough. We respond to Fairfax, we respond to Loudoun, we respond to Arlington, we respond to Montgomery and sometimes PG, but why can't we be the first to put a non-chrome rubber field in? They stopped. They've shown and they've realized that there is something wrong. We should know that something's wrong and do something about it. And we could be the first in this area to put one in that's not chrome rubber and set the standards for everybody else in our, in our region. So I think that that needs to be addressed. I hope you would take all the parents concerned, I'm speaking for other parents who could not make it here tonight, I can't say I'm speaking for everybody at Woodbridge, but I'm speaking for quite a few who do have this concern, and we do hope that you listen to us and do take our children's health and those coming up on these fields' health into effect. Thank you. Appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman.
Julius Jackson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Julius Jackson, one-one-four-one-four, Garisdale Place. Come before you like some of the other parents in the area who are concerned or want to express their viewpoint concerning the boundaries in eastern Prince William County elementary schools. I think a lot of, a lot of the parents who have already spoken have made a lot of good points, taken some of the points I wanted to bring before you, but some things to consider from our perspective. We live back in River Falls. We want to keep our children in the West Ridge district because that is historically where we've been tied. That's the only school that those elementary students have known since that, that area has opened up. And it's more than just River Falls, it really is a West Ridge family in that area, and we want to keep that family together. We understand that some, some of the students are going to have to move. There's capacity issues, new school is opening up, and some of the students are going to have to move around, but we want to keep that together as much as possible. And, you know, we ask you to look at some of the traffic studies, look at the traffic impacts that are going to be caused specifically for our area. The community supports overwhelmingly keeping our students where they're at, and part of the concern that we have is middle school bus from Benton is going to be in the neighborhood at the same time if you move our children into Springwoods. You know, for the record, my kids went to Springwoods for two years before we moved, and there's nothing wrong with the school. But they've now taken roots in West Ridge, and it'd be kind of a shame to take them out of there. But that traffic study, look at that along not just Old Bridge, but within the neighborhoods and the impact that that may have. And also the impact that it's going to have on keeping those children together later. As for West Ridge and where we're at, we're going to be moving on to Benton, so if we move into Springwoods like one of the other parents was talking about, that move later is going to have them into three or four groups of children as they're going into high school. So they're not going to have some of those bonds that we prefer them to have. As high schools are getting larger, it's important to have those bonds between those students as they go into that environment that's going to be large and unfamiliar. They have some familiar faces going from elementary to middle and into high school. Also, looking at it, it's uprooting two groups of students to move those children from River Falls out to Springwoods. You know, Penn is going to be moving some children in, so instead of uprooting those two groups of students, uproot the one, we got it, that's a necessity due to the capacity at that school. But West Ridge doesn't have the same capacity issues that some of the other elementary schools have as borne out by two of the proposals that we've seen that kept those students where they're at. I would ask you to take that into consideration for our neighborhood and for all of the West Ridge community in keeping our, our West Ridge family together. Thank you for your time this evening. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Dr. Kate Olson Flynn.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board, and Dr. Walts. My name is Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, and you have my address on file, and I'm here to share some important news and requests from parents who care. I have great news, and you've heard it already, from Sonia, that Woodbridge High School was awarded a School of Excellence, and we are so proud of all our teachers, staff, students, and particularly our principal, who has led the effort in rebuilding the Viking Village into a strong, caring, dedicated school family that supports all students to succeed academically and socially. Way to go, Woodbridge. I am also here to ask that you please reconsider the current RFP and rewrite the proposal to allow companies that use safe materials for the turf field so that other companies can bid in the process. I need you to think about the students' health and safety first. That's your job, and it's the health and safety not just of Woodbridge High School but of Stonewall as well. We're not just asking for Woodbridge, those students at Stonewall deserve a safe, healthy field as well. And that's what matters most, are the students. So please put their well-being first when considering this bidding process. And last, it's such great news that the governor proposed an eighty, a budget of eighty million dollars for aging buildings. Guess what I'm going to ask for? I'm so excited. So I ask that if this budget passes the legislature, then that you please use the, this opportunity to acquire funds to rebuild and renovate, guess who, Woodbridge. We are in desperate need, as you know, of updates to our infrastructure. First, we still need a gym that has the same amount of full-length courts as the newer high schools. We only have one full-length court that all our indoor sports have to share and our band and our PE and everyone. We really need three at least so that it's equitable for our students, and our students don't have to stay until eleven o'clock at night in order to practice. And I'm always going to ask this, I know you've heard it from me before, we need windows. I know you've said no, but I'm still going to ask for them because windows are good for students, it's good for morale, and it would help with cellphone connectivity, which is also what we need. So, since this eighty million budget proposal for aging buildings, I have a great way that you can think about using it and asking for more money. So I hope that you consider these options. Thank you all for your time and consideration, and I wish you a very happy holiday.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to student learning and accountability. We have a report on the special education audit update. Ms. Rita Goss and Dr. Roper.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, we will be sharing some of the progress we've made in responding to the special education audit review recommendations, which were first provided to you last spring. Responding to the recommendations is a team effort led by our Office of Special Education. Previously, we provided the board information regarding our work to respond to the recommendations, and Dr. Roper, the Director of the Office of Special Education, will review for the public and the board the recommendation areas. She will share with you the priorities determined based on feedback and input to include input from our Special Education Advisory Committee, otherwise known as CAC. And she will give you some information on the work thus far and some next steps. At this time, I would like to invite to the podium Dr. Michelle Roper.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Thank you for having me here this evening to provide an overview of the exciting things that are happening in Prince William County schools in special education. As you and the public are aware, last year the Division went through a special education review completed by Public Consulting Group. It included focus groups with various stakeholders, file reviews, document reviews, and in the end resulted in twenty-four recommendation areas to address special education in Prince William County schools. Since the completion of the review, we have prioritized and been working hard to address each of the recommendation areas. Some of the progress made was because we had already started to review our programming and determined needs that aligned with the audit recommendations provided in the spring of last year. Because of this work ahead of the audit review, I shared with you in June that Prince William was not considered disproportionate by the state. We had also already made significant efforts to address assistive technology needs for students with disabilities. This year, Dr. Walts funded an additional assistive technology coordinator who we just hired, and he will assist us in assessing the needs of students and providing training to teachers on appropriately selected communication and assistive technology devices. This is exciting because we have had only one person to service all our teachers and their students who need assistive technology. You will hear more about the next steps we have taken as we go through the presentation. But before we begin with the overview, I would like to take a moment to share something with you. As many people who know me would tell you, I do not take the education and care of students with disabilities lightly. I am entirely dedicated to addressing each of the recommendations and doing whatever it takes to meet the needs of each student, even if it is outside of an area that was in the audit review recommendations. I am fortunate to have the support of the superintendent and his staff to work alongside extraordinarily dedicated Office of Special Education staff, special education teachers and teaching assistants, parents, principals, and assistant principals, and the list goes on and on. I am certain that all of these people are also dedicated to do whatever it takes to provide a world-class education for each of our students with disabilities. So while we review the progress made thus far towards these recommendations, we know that the work we do for our students will continue long past this review. So to begin, we will start with a reminder of the scope of what PCG examined during the review. This included human capital and training, compliance and outcomes, continuum of services, budget and resource allocation, data and record-keeping, and family and community engagement. These are the twenty-four areas PCG defined that were designated into specific categories to be addressed by the Division. As I mentioned, we have begun to address each of these areas, which was outlined in a presentation to the Special Education Advisory Committee, CAC, and an information item provided to you by Dr. Walts. In the next slides, we will review the prioritization with input from stakeholders and highlights of what we have done so far. On the slide on the left-hand, you can see the prioritization based on input from our CAC. As I review each area, I will provide a brief description of each. Based on the input of CAC, they prioritize funding accountability, which addresses the accountability of special education resources. Next is special education standards, which examines division-wide special education programming. Parent and family engagement, which looks at enhancement of communication with parents in a partnership with CAC. Implementing frameworks for inclusive practices with fidelity, which looks at evidence-based practices for students with disabilities in all settings within the school. Building a system, a system-wide culture of academic optimism, which also looks at research-based instruction. And professional learning, which examines differentiated professional development. Next, on the right side, based on PWCS staff input, we have MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of supports, which looks at the understanding of frameworks of instruction for all students, not just students with disabilities. One of the focuses of MTSS is to examine all of the interventions put in place before a student is eligible for special education. Next, there's a viable curriculum for students taking the alternate assessment, which is to ensure that all students have resources and materials that are aligned with the standards. Next is preschool for students with disabilities, which looks at the inclusive placement options for preschool students with disabilities. Parent and family engagement, again, which looks at parent involvement and partnerships. And lastly, we have communication devices, which looks at resources our students require in regards to assistive technology. To clarify these resources a bit more, there are those items that are purchased by a school for all students in general and special education classes, such as PCs or laptops. The difference with the devices provided by the Office of Special Education is that they are specific to student needs as outlined in the IEP. These include items such as eye-gaze devices, GoTalk switches, iPads that may be specific to writing or communication, and other items that are needed based on IEP determination. The following few slides are highlights The following few slides are highlights of some of the things that we have done so far to address the areas mentioned earlier. So we have trained over six hundred teachers in evidence-based reading strategies, as of today, it's actually six hundred and fifty, in Orton-Gillingham, Lynda Mood Bell, and SRA. Last night, we provided CAC an overview of those reading strategies. TeachTown Basics and Social Skills is a research-based program that we are extremely excited to have in Prince William County Schools. There are various parts to this program that address the needs of many learners, including our students who participate in the aligned standards of learning, students who need support in social skills, and the program tracks student data and adjusts based on the student responses. We've also used equals math. It's another exciting item that we've begun using, and it's a multisensory math resource.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Sorry. Dr. Roper, I, I, if you go back to the slide on, or we're still on the slide for TeachTown.
Yes.
Just for folks that don't understand, and, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this is really exciting.
Yes.
This program is based on some of the things that we couldn't, in the state, get passed years ago for insurance companies to cover kids with autism and, and different therapies and treatments and programs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It's based on that.
Yes.
So this is a very progressive, very innovative idea to bring this into the public school system, correct?
Yes. I am extremely excited to have this product. It's something that I've been interested in for many years. It's based really in the theories of applied behavior analysis that can be used with students with different disabilities, including emotional disabilities, autism, intellectual disabilities. So it's an excellent program, and it, it even designs the reinforcement for the student based on what they've chosen within the program. So there's so many things, I could go on all night about how wonderful it is.
Yeah, I, I want to commend you, commend Dr. Walts, all of you for, this is a great program, and I'm excited to hear more about how it's being implemented, and, and look forward to seeing the results of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And equals math is another item that we're excited to have begun using, which is a multisensory math resource that provides explicit instruction in math skills. To continue, connected to MTSS, our rebound program, which previously placed students at a separate campus to work on academics and behavior, now focuses on what research shows us is best, which is to address their needs in their current setting. When there is a need, we send the staff directly to the school to provide coaching and support. Next, as we have so many models of success in the Division, we have highlighted the excellent practices at our update meetings, such as, in this picture on the slide, our colleagues from Potomac High School, who presented on co-teaching strategies and practices for students with disabilities. These experiences have allowed us opportunities for networking and sharing among schools. In the next two bullets, as mentioned before, CAC prioritized funding accountability, so we have worked together with the Level Associates, the Principals, and I to ensure that funding is utilized as allocated. You saw earlier that one of the recommendations was communication devices and support needed in that area, and as you know, Dr. Walts has established our response to the audit as a priority, and he pre, provided us with the funding for an additional assistive technology coordinator who will begin in January. Next, as I work closely with all stakeholders, including the Director of Finance, to ensure that staffing ratios are in compliance. And lastly, on this slide, the review highlighted our progress that we had made in the area of professional development for tier-one instruction, and we continue to address this area through PLC training as our, and as a part of our division-wide professional development plan. This work addresses many of the recommendation areas, including uni, universal design for learning and academic optimism. To address inclusive practices, we utilize our teaching assistants to provide support in the general education setting, and we accurately reflect their services on the IEP. And in order to address the preschool recommendation, we opened two new preschool special education classes at Washington Reed. And then lastly, to address several of the recommendations, we continually gather people here, including parents and other school-wide stakeholders, to address things like parent communication, parent resources, and various processes and procedures. And so in closing, I would just really like to thank everyone for their continuous work and dedication and support in all of these items.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Ms. Jessie.
Okay. Hi, I, I'm very pleased to see that we are really beginning to look more specifically at some of the special ed concerns. When I look at Slide Three, there's so much there. Have you looked at any priority of, there's just so much there. I'm just overwhelmed looking at it. And when you're talking to your teachers, are you focused on specific items this year, or how are you, and some of these things, you know, are spiraled in, I know that, so what do you see as some of your number-one items?
So this slide right here is really where we got the input of all the stakeholders to determine the priorities, but as I said earlier, it doesn't mean that we're not looking at all of them. There's items going on for each of these that were described in the info item that were shared with you to really show in each of the areas what we're doing, but these are the ones that were dedicated as priorities with the input from CAC and other PWCS staff.
Yeah. And on the Lynda Mood Bell.
Yes.
Are you getting special training for that? That's a fascinating program also.
Yes, we have various types of trainings going on within the Division. As I said, we've trained six hundred and fifty people in those different strategies, so that is one of the ones that we're beginning to implement.
My other question is evidence-based. Are you looking at, I know with IEPs, that's very difficult, but when you look at the overall level of performance as measured by the State Department of Education, do you have an overall goal to, I think we're like, I don't know, forty-five or forty-six or something like that percent? Are you looking at percentage ra, ratings in your, in what, I don't, we call, we call it a SMART goal, but have you set some SMART goals for certain, in reading and math?
Yes, the schools do that, and then we also look at school data as we implement, decide which strategies and programs we're going to use at each school. We connect with the perfor, performance of the students at the school, so we do use data to make those decisions.
The other, I have two other things. Where are we now, and what are you guys looking at down the road?
So we are not considered disproportionate right now, but that does not mean that we don't continue to very strategically look at our student behavior. I know the middle school has done an excellent job with Mr. Bixby's guidance of really looking at student discipline and what we're doing proactively to address student behavior. So even though we're not considered disproportionate, it doesn't mean that it's not something that we're not looking at every day.
Okay. And finally, on teacher aides. I was Title I supervisor, and years ago, a hundred years ago, I guess, but one of the things that I learned was that my teacher aides often were sometimes better teachers than the teachers in terms of just that, that it factor, they knew how to work with kids. And so we didn't have a program, but we spent some time making, helping them to get degrees. I guess it's more for Dr. Walts. Do we have something in mind to grow our own teachers with providing, or have we looked into the possibility of grants or some assistance to train our teacher aides to become teachers? I think we had a growing our own, but I'm not sure that's the same. Are we looking at that? Because I think we've got a lot of great teachers in this county that are teacher aides that could become full-fledged teachers.
So we have both of those, Mrs. Jessie. So one of the changes that I made a few years back is, it used to be that in order to be eligible for any kind of tuition reimbursement, you could only take a course that had to do with the job you are currently in. So the change that I made was that if you were, say, for example, your, your idea of a teacher assistant, and you are interested in teaching, you can access the tuition reimbursement dollars to become a teacher. And in fact, we now have several teachers who started off as teaching assistants, and because of that program, which again is part of what you, as a board, approve in the budget, we have a pipeline of folks, and, and several are already now teaching for us.
Ken, is there a way for us to expedite? Can we put some money in the budget, a little bit more, to really expedite that and become more systematic with it? A training, I'm talking about a, a massive training program, not just, I'm sure you'd say, sure, give us the money.
Well, as you know, we have a lot of competing interests, but that's certainly one of them that's on the radar scale, because one of the things that you can tell as a, if, if a customer uses something that you offer them. So one of the things that we see year after year is that that money is expended long before the end of second semester. So that is one of the considerations that we are looking at in the budget.
And site visits for, in your professional development plan, do you have site visits in mind? And that's something I also need, think, we need to think about funding. Special ed is, is really special. I, I did special ed before also, so it's one of the love fests that I have with students. I, in fact, I worked at Muriel Humphreys and, when I first came to the county. So special ed is something that I really think we need to invest. I think some of the students that are labeled special ed, as you know, I'm sure you know this also, that trying to get that label removed is also something that's very important. But thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate it. One of the things that we saw in the original presentation we had last spring was talk about fiscal responsibility and where does the money go for special education. There was a lot of mention of that, and there was a mention of a special education fiscal officer, and I see in Page Six here that Level Associates are meeting with Principals to review funding, that you get to monitor the funding and follow up with Principals and Level Associates, and you all have a lot on you already. So how is this working, and are we going to be looking at? Not that I want to add more people to central office, because that's not something I usually do, Dr. Walts knows that very well, but it's, this is one of the issues, it's a big one for parents, is the fiscal accountability, is the money going to our schools and to our students? And so, and also, you've got so much on you with overseeing all of this, and that's one of my concerns. So how is this working, or is there going to be a proposal to add a fiscal officer for special education?
So we have the critical needs process in the Division, and anything that we thought was going to be needed related to the special education audit was placed in that process. But as I said in the presentation, I do work closely with the Principals and Level Associates to en, ensure that allocations are, and teaching and staffing is, is appropriately, you know, meeting the school's needs.
Okay, so that means that we get to pay special attention to the critical unmet needs list, Dr. Walts, for special education?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that. Okay, and then my other comment, question, you referenced communication devices at the beginning, and I, not sure who this presentation was to, but it talked about the ACC plan and how we're going to all of our students. How are we doing with visiting the remainder of our autism classes and ID moderate classes as far as evaluating them?
It's going wonderfully. So we have a calendar laid out, we have an excellent team of people that go visit the classrooms regularly, and what I love about the plan is that they go in a series of visits. So they're going to the classroom, they're meeting with the teacher, they're looking at the needs of each child in the classroom. So instead of, you know, just having professional development, we're actually in the classrooms talking about each child's needs and meeting with the teacher over a series of months. So the plan's going very well.
Okay, and I use the acronym, so for people who are listening, it's the Augmentative and Alternative Communication Plan, that's specifically looking at devices that are needed for children for the IP, as we talked about earlier. Okay, thank you, because that was something that parents talked about with me earlier too. And then I want to note that we did spend a lot of money, thank you, Dr. Walts, and on additional iPads and eye-gaze devices and other tools for our students for this year, and thank you for that.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you for the great work. I think we'll move next to Finance and Support Services. Infrastructure Task Force, Middle and High School Recommendations. Mr. Mallard.
Thank you, Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. Our next agenda item is a report from the Infrastructure Task Force. The task force was created by the board to review middle and high school facilities and make recommendations for improvements. So tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce the former Associate Superintendent for Finance and Support Services, Mr. Dave Klein. Mr. Klein was a member of this task force from day one, and when he retired in June, he promised that he would come back and complete his tour of duty. Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mallard. Dr. Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. As you know, the board created and charged a task force two years ago to take a look at our elementary, middle, and high schools and look at the issues relative to equity between older schools and the newer schools. And certainly, this has been a, a long, two-year process, and it essentially is coming back to conclusion tonight. If you recall, last December, the committee came forward with recommendations on the elementary side, and tonight, it comes back with recommendations on the middle and high school side. And certainly, it, it's been a, a very long and challenging process for us. I'd certainly, Mr. Richardson, in a few minutes, will have certainly commendations for the committee, but I, I would certainly like to highlight and, and thank some of the, the members of our staff who have put in some significant hours outside the normal workday, and in, and in addition, in order to support the work of the committee, it, it's a substantial additional workload even during the day. So they've done a tremendous job with this. I would also like to say that as we've looked at it, it certainly has helped, as much as we go through the capital improvements process and look at differences in schools, look at ages and renovation cycles, et cetera, it is, this has certainly been a, a very beneficial process for us, us as well, and, and a good learning process by both going out and visiting additional schools, surveying buildings, participating with the members of the committee, and getting their insight into their thoughts and processes about where we stand in equity. So with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Don Richardson, who has chaired the Infrastructure Task Force for the last two years.
Where is my clicker? Forward, forward? Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, wherever you are, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. I am Don Richardson. I am glad to be back with you again for our final report with the Infrastructure Task Force. I would like to echo what Mr. Klein said, our appreciation to the staff members, the many staff members who have supported us for the last two years plus on this effort. They put in a lot of extra duty to support us, and particularly this second year, there was a lot of discussion among us and with them, and they had to be patient in answering our questions to try to get our arms wrapped around all the various issues at the high school and middle school levels. The issues, the infrastructure issues are different. We're not going to be giving you the same kind of recommendations that we did for the elementary schools. We're going to give you a menu of options of varying cost, and you will be able to pick the ones that you think you can work into the budget. But I do, on behalf of the task force, I do appreciate very much the efforts of all the staff members who, who supported this effort. I also appreciate very much the time that my task force members put in on this. Some of them are here tonight. Just wave or stand up. They, they hung in there with me, and, and it's been good to have their support. We've had a lot of really good conversations, and I think we've got something for you that will at least help you move forward. Basically, you know what the mission was, but I'll review it very briefly. We were supposed to assess the school-based infrastructure, the physical infrastructure, and focus on the differences between the newer schools and the older schools, and come up with some ideas for ways that we could close the gap in terms of how we support the older schools. And just generally speaking, that included looking at all the different ways that the infrastructure in the schools are used, both for the infrastructure in the schools are used, both for the school day and in the community. We had a couple of changes in the makeup of the task force this year, not many, but most of them are the same people we started with. We were looking basically at the older schools and where they fall short of what you would consider the current standard, which is, for all practical purposes, the newer half of the schools in the county. We're going to, we're not really going to be able to give you a prioritization, per se. All of the things we're going to give you tonight are worthy of being done. And it's really going to be a matter of you deciding what you can fit into the CIP and what is the most important thing from your standpoint. But all of the things we would recommend are worth doing if you have the ability to do so. We didn't come back with as detailed a matrix as we did with the elementary schools, but I think there were some broad themes we did identify. And you'll see in a minute where we're going with this. We had to look at a lot of data. And again, I appreciate staff's patience in going over with us and explaining with us what it all means. It's a very complex puzzle. As we did with the elementary schools, we are expecting you to prioritize improvements that can enhance instructional performance, and recognizing that safety, security, and health issues are important in the sense of they do impact how students can perform and how staff can teach. We, as we did with the elementary schools, we toured several middle schools and high schools to get our hands, our eyes right on the problem. And in addition to that, we created a survey forum and interviewed all the principals at the middle school and high school level, not just the older schools, but the newer ones as well, and asked them on a very detailed matrix to evaluate different aspects of their physical infrastructure, both in terms of quality and in terms of quantity. Do we have enough of it? And the responses were very interesting. Staff can provide you with the detailed responses we got, as well as a summary document of what they found. And it would be, it's worth looking at if you want to get a flavor of how it looks to a building principal. A lot of the issues we found with infrastructure were at least partly a problem only because it wasn't that the infrastructure itself was of lower quality. It's just that you were trying to serve more students with it than it was designed to handle. And so, in that sense, reducing school overcrowding overall will help address some of those. But that being said, there are some definite recommendations here for things you could do to improve the physical infrastructure. We're going to talk about tier-one schools. And when I say tier-one, these are the half-a-dozen high schools and the eight or so middle schools that are the oldest by date of construction. They broke down into, in terms of the time periods when they were built, they broke rather neatly in the middle for the high schools. There were three tiers. There is three middle schools in a middle generation, and then the newer middle schools. We don't really have any recommendations for the middle-tier middle schools because they've all been renovated relatively recently. They've had some help. So, we're going to focus our talking tonight on the oldest high schools and the oldest middle schools. Now, having said that, one of the high schools, as you see here, and two of the middle schools, and in that, I include the traditional schools, have recently been renovated. And so, when we say focus this kind of an improvement on the tier-one schools, what we're really saying is focus it on the tier-one schools that have not gotten help recently in terms of renovation. Because you're not going to be able to do everything that they all might need. And so, we're trying to focus on the schools that need it the most and haven't had any help recently. The middle schools, which includes Pennington Traditional School, and again, as you can see, two of the middle schools and Pennington have had relatively recent renovations. So, they have had some help with their infrastructure issues. Again, all of the schools, all of the older schools can point to things that are not ideal. And it's just going to be a matter of how much can you do? One strategic, these are the two, the first two bullets here, basically, I've already talked about, that we're trying to prioritize things that will help the maximum number of students at the specific schools that I just mentioned. Another strategic recommendation is to go back and take another look at the IT Technology Improvement Program. We talked about this last year with the elementary schools, and we would ask you to do the same thing this year. The plan, as I understand it, is that every classroom will have a Wi-Fi access point, and all the schools will have the expanded bandwidth to the school within a couple of years. And that's great. We figured we didn't need to make any further recommendations as far as that's concerned because that was close enough. But review it, make sure that all of these older schools are in fact going to get the equalized access to the technology bandwidth and infrastructure sometime in the next couple of years. And if not, try to accelerate that so that they all get it then. Another strategic recommendation, again, we mentioned this last year with the elementary schools, the Safe Schools Advisory Council some time ago identified infrastructure improvements related to security. We believe that most of the schools are going to have them within a few years. And if not, we recommend you try to speed those up as well. We noted with pleasure that this past year, you did find some money to help with some of the safety improvements, and that's a great thing. So, please continue to do that with the middle schools and the high schools. You might want to consider whether there are other issues, such as exterior lighting, that you might want to include in the category of security infrastructure. Because obviously, well-lit parking lots are a safety issue. Another issue that we discussed a bit was the fact that at some of the older schools, the limitations on the infrastructure make it more difficult for that school to gain revenue from outside rentals to other organizations. And that inhibits the school being able to acquire additional funds for some of their needs. I'm not sure how you address that, but you might want to think about the impact of an inadequate infrastructure on the school's ability to generate additional revenue for itself. Some specific recommendations. One of the common themes in the surveys we got was heating and air conditioning, electrical, intercom, and public address, and plumbing, what I call systems issues. There are, you're never going to make everybody happy. You're always going to have the argument whether the school's too hot, it's too cold. And you'll probably split right down the middle as to who thinks it's too hot and who thinks it's too cold. But there have been a lot of schools that are repeatedly having staff come out with work orders to fix systems that just aren't working right. And if you could address, there are places in the schools where conditions are very uncomfortable because the air circulation isn't right. There are places where the school is so old that the electrical infrastructure just wasn't designed to support the kind of technology needs we have now for our educational program. So, we're not just focused on the schools I mentioned here in the bullets. All of these issues are present to one degree or another in a lot of the schools. But what we're saying is, if you can accelerate Garfield, Woodbridge, Stonewall Jackson, and Osborne Park High Schools, their renewals, to bring them within the current 10-year CIP. They're not currently in it, I believe. The other thing you might want to do is for Graham Park, Fred Lynn, and Woodbridge Middle School, do the same thing. You'll notice there are some dollar figures here. These are just ballpark figures. We wanted to give you a general sense of the magnitude of the different recommendations we have. Obviously, if you are serious about addressing any of these, staff will come back and give you much more precise estimates if you choose to put it in the CIP. It's a delicate political thing to do, but if you have schools that have been renovated more recently, you could potentially push their next renovations back a little bit to free up money to move some of these ahead. But that's a call you'll have to make. Another specific recommendation that we talked about, there are issues with the auxiliary gyms at Woodbridge and Garfield. At both of those places, you could construct new auxiliary gyms. That's a possibility. The site will permit it. And I should mention that some of the things that we did not recommend were things that, while they were desirable, were simply not possible due to the site configuration of a particular school. We think that Brentsville High School, definitely, they would like to have some improvements for their CTE programs, especially the horticulture program. It was a lot of fun going out and seeing what they're doing out there already. But that would be, that's outside the building, a lot of that. And that would be a helpful thing for them. That program has really taken off, and improving the infrastructure would be helpful for them. Another thing that came up was that at Stonewall Jackson and Osborne Park, both, when the open classrooms were enclosed, there were a number of things that were not completed because of lack of funding that would normally have been done at a major renovation at that stage. And so, we would like to see that the renovation items that were not done at that time be caught up on, if possible. And we're talking about the first-floor core area specifically. That's one place where we could put a dollar, a rough dollar figure on. Osborne Park in particular has concerns about that. Another thing, that we don't really have any idea of how much it will cost, but the notion of putting aside a one-time fund to replace classroom furniture that's worn out or not usable in the current academic requirements, a number of the older schools, the furniture is pretty old. And it just, it just isn't working for them. Another thing, the interactive whiteboards. And I say that or other presentation technology because not all principals want to have the interactive whiteboards. Some of them prefer other technologies. And we want to leave some flexibility for staff to work with the schools on that. But in the tier-one middle schools and high schools that do not already have the presentation technology in the classrooms, let's try to get them outfitted so that everybody at least starts at the same baseline. Another thing which was requested was turf competition fields at OP and Garfield, and a turf practice field at Brentsville. And you can see the rough dollar cost up there. Let's see, what else do we have here? This is one that, to a certain extent, is going to be dependent on what you can do at the site. Garfield, Woodbridge, and Potomac High Schools do not have as many spaces as the design standard would call for. It may or may not be an issue for each of those schools. And the site may or may not allow much expansion, but it's certainly worth doing if the site will allow. Another issue that came up specifically at Woodbridge is because of where the parking is laid out and where the bus parking is, traffic flow is not smooth and not necessarily as safe in that one particular area. We talked about it a little bit, but staff might want to take another look at this and see if there's anything that could be done to relocate the bus parking or otherwise improve that particular situation. As you know, CIP, it's a 20- to 25-year renewal cycles. Schools that were built in the early 90s are now being renovated. And projects that are already completed would show up here otherwise. A lot of them, air conditioning, all the schools, and air conditioning of the kitchens have already been done. We've renovated 14 schools over the last five years, and we have $605 million planned for renovations, renewals, and repairs at all school levels over the next 10 years. So, we're already doing a lot. But in the sense of, if you're interested in addressing the disparity in infrastructure, some of our recommendations would help at least close the gap a little bit for those older schools. Obviously, you'll have to work this into the CIP somehow. As we noted last year with the elementary schools, even if you had the money, there would be too many projects to staff to manage effectively and to do them all at once. And the contractor community likely wouldn't have the capacity to address all the needs all at once either. So, you're going to phase it in over time and coordinate it with the existing CIP. As you well know, the more you can bundle into a planned renovation, the better. It's more cost-effective than trying to do piecemeal little projects here and there. So, that'll be the challenge, is to try to work some of these things in, in a way that is the most economically efficient way to go. We couldn't come up with a cookie-cutter way of equalizing resources since we have a variety of high school and middle school prototypes. And as I said earlier, some of the sites, there are things that are infrastructure deficits, if you will. But there's simply no way at the site to do anything about them. There's no practical way to deal with it. And as I said already, it's better to try to put your projects together at each school to be as efficient as possible, both time-wise and price-wise. We've finished what you gave us to do. We gave you the elementary school improvements last December. It was quite a challenge to deal with both levels of schools. And we went around and around, had a lot of discussions, covered a lot of ground. There's a lot more we could say. But I think this, this gives you at least a starting point as you go into CIP time. Also, would like to make a couple of recommendations of my own going forward. The nice thing about task forces is that they get members of the community who are motivated and also have expertise involved with the school division where they can learn more about how things really work. And that's a useful thing to do. And so, having task forces for whatever you're trying to do is always a good idea. But it's a significant amount of work for the members, and it's a significant amount of work for staff. So, you want to make good use of the time you do have, and you want to make sure that the people you appoint to these task forces understand the time commitment and the level of effort that's going to be required. And it is, and it is a significant amount of effort. Another thing in relation to that, consider the scope of work you're trying to accomplish. And if it looks like you might need to take a couple of years to accomplish that scope, you might want to consider breaking it down into smaller chunks, and perhaps having one group of people work for a year on one chunk of it, bring in another group of people the following year to work on the next chunk. It was hard the second year. We had a number of people. Lives, things change. And you thought you could make the commitment when you got on the task force, and after a year, you found that life has intruded. And all of a sudden, you're just not able to devote the time anymore. So, it's better to understand that that could happen and try to keep it in a chunk that people can commit to and finish. Also, when you charter a task force, make sure it's clear what is and what is not part of that task force's charter. And don't modify the charter once they've started work. Because once you do that, then you've wasted all the early work of the task force. They have to go back to square one. And so, make sure what it is you want them to do and what you don't want them to do in that particular area. And then let them proceed and finish. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. And I appreciate your time listening. I know it's getting late.
Mr. Trennem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to thank you, Mr. Richardson, and also Mr. Klein, and all the members of the task force, and all the staff work that's gone into this. As one of the people that inflicted this on you all, I want to say I do truly appreciate the efforts. It was a Herculean task. I knew it was, I knew it was hard when we started. And I don't think we could comprehend just how much work is going to be involved. But I do want to say, I appreciate that. As a board member who's got both new schools and old schools right next to each other, or within, you could throw a rock and hit one from one to the other, it does, the students and the, it does make a difference. The, everybody notices the difference between the older ones and the new ones. And when, usually, we talk about that, and people think about, you know, the parents are the ones that are saying that. And they are. But it's not just the parents. It's also the students, and it's also the staff. Trust me, our staff knows the difference between, the ones that are in the older schools knows the difference between the older schools and the newer schools. So, I think this is important. I think the, I really appreciate the recommendations that you all gave to us. Obviously, it's now the onus is on us on the board to figure out how to pay for these and how to fit them in. Hopefully, with some of the changes in the CIP process, in the CIP projections and stuff like that, with some reduced growth rates and stuff like that, hopefully, that may give us a little flexibility to look at trying to work some things in over the Appreciate you mentioning it because I was going to ask about it. I would like to see the survey results from the principals. I think that would be very interesting. And also, I think it would be helpful if the staff could provide us for, with regard to the recommendation at Stonewall and OP on that core area renovation in the first floor, what types of, what that involves, and what are the specifics on that. I think that would be very helpful for us as a board to see. Would note the, I don't know how we're going to pay for it, but I think the auxiliary gyms that were mentioned would help go to address some of the concerns that were raised earlier in the board meeting. That's all I'll say about that. But I think it's, y'all did a great job. I can't, I can't say enough about it. Like I said, just thank you, thank you all for all the work you did.
Well, thank you, Mr. Trennem. We appreciate that. I would mention, since you mentioned the surveys, in addition to the actual surveys that each prin- that each principal filled out, there was also a summary document the staff put together for us that might be worth looking at first because then you see some of the trends. I would encourage you to look at, because all the principals, I think almost all the principals, not just the principals of the older schools, filled out these things. Now, take it with a grain of salt because we asked them to rate things on a one to four-point schedule and everybody's got a different idea of what average, good, great is. But within each survey that each principal did, you can see what that school feels is the most important issue. Also, some of the comments we got back from some of the newer school principals are worth looking at in terms not of things that you need to do because you're not going to be, this is not intended to help them right now, but some of the principals were very thoughtful about lessons we could learn for building future schools, things that maybe hadn't been thought about before that, you know, that would be helpful down the road. And so it would be worthwhile just to look at some of their thoughts in that regard as well.
Appreciate that. One thing I did want to follow up on as well is I appreciated the comment about the infrastructure and the ability to raise funds because one thing is, it seems like when we open a new school, especially at the high school level, we open up a new school that's got the newest of everything, the best of everything, and we've also provided it with the best ability to continue to raise funds to keep the best of everything. And so it puts the older schools are trying to play catch-up in a game that they're never going to win. So I appreciate that.
Ms. Jesse.
First, I want to thank the committee for, it looks like a lot of comprehensive work. Help me understand how this report ties, is transferred over to our budget, when we work on our budget, and to the CIP. Have you, did your task force consider any timelines or anything on any of this?
Not a specific timeline in the sense of move school X to year Y, but the schools that we were talking about specifically there to get renovated sooner, I believe none of them are in the current scope of the current tenure CIP for their next renovation. So what we were suggesting is if you can accelerate their next renovation to bring it within the current scope of the CIP, the current tenure CIP. Move them up as much as you can. You're not going to be able to do them all next year, but see how soon you can get their renovations done.
Yeah. I want to thank you because the, you know, when we built Cogan and I was one of the people voting for Cogan High School because I thought we really need to look ahead. Earlier, the Special Education Committee, they presented the audit report for special ed. One of the things I think I'm proud of and I'm sure Dr. Walz too, is that special education students now go for swim therapy and the number of kids that they've taught how to swim. So I think we're really progressing. But with the building of Cogan, it became, people became more, it was more evidence that there was such a disparity. And I want to say this on behalf of the task force and also for the PWC ladies at Woodbridge, these women came together because they thought, you know, we went for a walk. And I had never gone for a walk in that building. I mean, as an elementary principal, I had a school without a cafeteria and it never occurred to me that I should have anything better because I hadn't seen anything on the other side. Once I became a board member, I became more aware. So I really do appreciate the work that you are doing. I did notice in the fields that Brentsville and I think that some of the other schools are getting a practice field. Is there any reason why Woodbridge was not considered in that?
It was not getting them a practice field. If you're going to replace their, the existing practice field, do it with turf rather than...
Yeah, or the practice field.
The reason we didn't mention Woodbridge, I believe, is because Woodbridge is already in process. We weren't going to make recommendations for things where the fields are already being worked on.
I'm not sure about that, but I'll get clarification on it. That's, you know, that's not...
Brentsville specifically did not want an actual turf field for competition.
Right.
They wanted their turf field for practice.
Right. Brentsville did not want a turf field for their main competition field. If they, they said, "We'd prefer to have a turf field for the practice field." That was what they told us. Now, it sounded to me tonight from the citizens that made comments about the crumb rubber that it sounded like the Woodbridge field is already being worked on or is going to be worked on.
It's the main field. It's not the practice.
No, understood. I'm just saying, the reason we didn't address main fields or practice fields there was because it was our understanding that that was already...
I'll address that in another, I'll address that in another setting. Again, thank you. Thank you for what you've done. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, for all of your work on this and all the committee members. We know it was a tremendous amount of work and your report shows how much work you put into it. And I was also reading through some of your individual monthly reports as I was getting ready for today to look at some of the things you talked about. And you guys put a lot of detail and a lot of effort into this, so thank you very much. Looking at this, the tier-one schools, for example, Stonewall Middle School right now is in the middle of a lot of work. So question to staff, are there some things in here for, that are being recommended that we might think about incorporating with Stonewall Middle School? What would those be? What are the things that we are not doing right now at Stonewall that we might want to incorporate while we're in there working? So in regards to CIP, are there some things that we haven't included that are in this report? So that's a question I have for staff. And let's see, also looking at the recommendation for the gyms for Garfield and Woodbridge High School, if we were to add those to the CIP to do those soon, would we also, and this would probably be a question for Mr. Klein or Mr. Mallard, would we also, if we were to move those up and do those soon in a CIP, would we at the same time accelerate one of the renovations for the school or they had renovations fairly recently? I think Woodbridge, we've done a lot of work in because one of the talks we tend to have is, okay, when are we going to, like Mr. Richardson mentioned, try and do everything when we're already in the school for renovations?
It's not the CIP process yet, but...
Right.
I think the issue for the two gymnasiums is really a question that in theory, we would sort of normally wait until we're doing major work in those two schools. However, looking and saying that they're likely renovations are eight, 10, 12 years out, we felt that as a committee and in all likelihood in the CIP, we need to find a way to accelerate those two gymnasiums because of the critical needs. So it would be a matter of doing the gyms, not necessarily at four and a half million dollars apiece, as opposed to doing the gyms and a renovation, which could be 30 to 40 million dollars on top of that.
As part of this, as part of getting ready for the CIP, I know I've had my CIP meeting with you already, looking at the different high schools and the different middle schools in tier-one, could you put together a document with, for us with each of the tier-one schools and tell us when they've last had their update, when they're due for it next, and what your recommendation would be if we're incorporating into the CIP for when we would accelerate them? For example, Brentsville is listed as one of the oldest ones, so...
Brentsville is currently in the CIP and scheduled as a specific renovation.
Okay. All right.
Hilton is, Hilton is the next high school. Brentsville's the next one after that. I don't remember the specific years at this point. At this point, beyond that, while we look at some in the CIP, we're reluctant to put the names to them at this point mainly because if you're looking seven, eight, nine years out, it may well change between, you have two schools with very similar needs. It's difficult to identify them right. We may know, said, two or three schools that fit that, but in the sense of the next three or four years, it may change which one really should be first, second, third, et cetera.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you again, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Can you go into detail on the core areas you talked about for Stonewall Jackson and Osborne Park High School in terms of types of things that need to be done there?
Want to say anything about that? This was a discussion that was centered around the fact that there were things that were not done when they enclosed the classrooms that would normally be done. What were the, what were the specific issues?
So in the core area, it's pretty much everything. Especially at OP, the lighting is abysmal because of the drop ceiling. There's not much they can do with fixtures. It's the tile in the hallway. It's the entire office area. So it's pretty much everything there that has not been renovated or touched.
Things that, things that...
Does that sum it up?
The core, good evening. The core areas in those schools primarily consist of the metal demountable partitions. And I have a feeling that's probably one of the reasons it wasn't touched back in '04, '05. They're kind of complicated to fool with, plus the open enclosure took a lot of the funding. But yeah, the ceilings, the carpet, the paint, the demountable partitions, new walls that cut the space up into what they need now. The way it's cut up now probably doesn't work very well for them with, you know, the way they function today. So it would need a complete gut and that would take some time. That would definitely be a summertime project. Maybe even cut it in half, two summers. It'd be quite a project.
And we're pretty sure on a two and a half million number or?
It's a pretty good estimate, yeah.
I just wanted to echo my thanks for the committee members and everyone who worked really hard. Jill Klaus served as vice chair, did a great job helping make sure we had advocacy for the schools in that OP neck of the woods that are older schools that need attention. I know Julie Couch also worked really hard on that front as well. And then also shout to Paul Amira, does a great job in terms of school construction, land use, and appreciate everybody's advocacy there.
We had a really good group. We had a variety of people with a variety of experience and a variety of perspectives. And while it made the discussion pretty lively sometimes, a lot of interesting views. I know I learned some things, again, from talking to some people who came at it from a different perspective than I did. And that's a, that's a good thing, when you can get people with different levels of experience in different areas together, you'll have some pretty strong-willed personalities and you'll have some pretty strong conversations, but you'll all learn something. And so it was definitely worth our time to do and I'm glad I did it.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. You guys mentioned in the slides that you toured actually both the middle schools in the Potomac District, Graham Park and Potomac Middle School. You know, obviously two very different models, one newer than older building with those. But then, of course, with the new state-of-the-art middle school that we have coming in the next couple of years in the Potomac Shores community, designed, I think, one of the most beautiful middle school models by Mosley Architecture, some of the great work that's going there. Your general feedback or the group's feedback on some of the renovations that could be looked at with an older model like a Graham Park building? Any general observations or areas of improvement that could be done with changes there?
Graham Park. Chris, what were we focused on Graham Park?
Graham Park is essentially, it's in need of another renewal because when it was renewed back in the early 2000s, it didn't receive all the things that happen in a renewal today.
Yeah, that's about as specific as I can get. It's just that we were doing renewals differently back then. And if it was getting a renewal today, there would be some things it would get that it didn't get before. I unfortunately wasn't able to get to the tour of Graham Park. I had a conflict that night. But we'd, oh, what that does remind me, we did record most, did we record all of the...
Yeah, I saw the video online.
Most of the tours, we actually had staff with a camera, record, video camera, recording as we walked through and the commentary by the principal or the staff there. And so if you want to get a look at what we saw while we were touring these schools, you could ask staff to provide the video to you. Sometimes, I mean, again, picture's worth a thousand words. I was also very impressed, I have to say, at a number, at the schools I did go to, that how well the staff of the schools were doing with what they had. They, it was obvious that they were putting a lot of effort into maintaining what they had, taking care of it. And it's just that some of the, some of the infrastructure was just so old that it was really in need of a refresh. But yeah, that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, generally. Thank you. I appreciate that. Chris and Dixon, thank you for serving on this committee. I appreciate it.
Chris is my eagle-eye editor. He catches all the typos in the drafts and things. See, I'm an eagle-eye editor too, so I appreciate guys like him. I also appreciate the fact that facial hair seems to be back in style for him. Dr. Walz, you're the odd man. Well, no, I guess the parliamentarian isn't either, but we won't put any pressure on him. Maybe you need to grow a beard, Dr. Walz.
Yeah, I was told I look distinguished, which means old. Dr. Walz, I would point out that our student sitting next to you has you beat in the facial hair.
Dr. Walz just wants to survive. He's not worried about growing a beard. Besides, this will probably come off after the new year anyway. This is just a temporary beard.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the great work you guys did.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Really appreciate it. Superintendent's time, Dr. Walz.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Members of the board, two weeks ago, due to issues with transformers, two schools lost power, Westridge Elementary and Fred Lynn Middle School. Because of weather, the Westridge students spent the day at Lakewood Middle School. And I'd like to thank our transportation services for their work to quickly transport the students from Westridge to Lakewood. And remember, that's hundreds of students. Unplanned field trip. Thankfully, the Fred Lynn building had partial power, so they did not have to relocate. And I'd like to thank the staff at Woodbridge, Lakewood Middle School and Fred Lynn, our facilities personnel and Prince William County Police and Fire Departments for working to keep our students safe. And of course, thank you to School Food and Nutrition Services for ensuring our students were still served lunch. Speaking of Fred Lynn, the school principal, Hamish Brewer, was named Principal of the Year by Education Dive, a K-12 and a leading industry news publisher. Congratulations and thank you to Mr. Brewer for everything you do for our students. Congratulations to the Freedom High School football team for advancing to the state finals last weekend. Although falling short of the state title, we are very proud of the hard work and determination they displayed in advancing to the state final game. Great job. As you heard earlier tonight, the school division continues to work on addressing items identified in the special education audit. Last week, Michelle Roper, Director of Special Education, met with our elementary principals to share best practices and resources available to best serve students with special needs. I was in attendance with that, at that meeting along with key members of our staff and were educated as well in terms of some of these additional educational opportunities that will be afforded to our schools. She will continue to provide support to our schools throughout the school year. More than half of our schools, 56 to be exact, were recognized last week as schools of excellence in Prince William County. Congratulations to our students, staff and community members for this magnificent accomplishment. The school division is planning a division-wide recognition ceremony for January to honor these schools. Last week, we shared the nominees for Principal of the Year and Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to all the nominees who are listed on our website at www.pwcs.com. A reception honoring the nominees will be held at 6:00 PM on January 31st at Cogan High School. In closing, as the winter break nears, I wish everyone a wonderful and safe holiday season. I hope that our staff members enjoy their time off, spending quality time with their families and getting some rest. I also want to wish our staff, students and their families the very best during this holiday season. So for those celebrating the Jewish holidays, we just finished Hanukkah. Merry Christmas coming up, Happy Kwanzaa and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. We're going to move to Board Matters. 2201, adoption of the revised policy 134, which is what we postponed to tonight's meeting from last, which is the citizen participation. So I'm going to have Mary and the parliamentarian at some point walk us through what we're looking at here on the screen so that we are clear in what we're talking about. And I think it'll be the 134 board with Deutsch edits is the one we're looking at as far as the postponed...
If I could.
Yes, please.
This policy is one of our stragglers at the end of our adoption of the 100 series. Policy 134 was first on the docket, on the docket, I'm used to being in court. On the agenda for October 17th, there was discussion then. It was then modified somewhat with input from the board... It was then modified somewhat with input from the board. It was on the agenda for 11/7, and again, further discussion. It came back on November 28th, and yet there were additional discussions. What we have attached to the board docs and that the board has had available and the public has available is, are these various versions of the, of the policy as it's been morphing along here. 134, the second reading from November 28th, was how it appeared with various changes by, primarily by Mr. Trenum and by Ms. Williams. 134 with board and Deutsch edits is how it appeared after we edited in Mr. Deutsch's changes. Policy 134 Amendment Alternatives are suggestions made by the parliamentarian following discussion on November 28th, various amendment alternatives that were responsive to various concerns raised by board members. The last attachment is December 12th, today's draft of policy 134, which is a version that I put together at the request of Dr. Latif, trying to bring together or synthesize those alternatives suggested by the board parliamentarian relative to the various concerns expressed by the board. So that's, and that draft policy is before the board members in hard copy. You can see it in front of you as well as being on the screen. Essentially, the changes here are a requirement that citizens who must identify the topic to the clerk only have to do so generally in order to establish that it relates to Prince William County operations or business. A change to, a reference to the 30-minute initial comment period, which is current practice. Then a provision that relates to the authority of the chair with the agreement of a majority of the board to decide what I call the spillover periods. Essentially, there is language in here saying that all citizens who've identified an agenda item be allowed to speak before the vote. Under this language, the board chair with the majority of the board could agree to, if these citizens couldn't be obligated within the first 30 minutes, you could agree to place them someplace else on the agenda so that they could be heard before a vote on an agenda item. And then there's also a provision in here for people who are speaking on non-agenda items, if they can't be accommodated in the first 30 minutes, the board and the chair can decide to hear them in a spillover session at the, at the conclusion of board business. So that's kind of in a nutshell the changes that are in the 121218 draft.
So, Mr. Balk, you can talk, tell me, we have a pending motion that is currently on the floor that was postponed from the last time, which is the one that says board with Deutsch edits for second reading. What I asked Mary to do is to sort of synthesize, because if you look through all the documents that we have there, we have different versions, amendment 1A, 1B, 1C, to try to come up with the spirit by which we were sort of having our discussion last time, and that, I think she put in today's 1212.
Correct.
So we could, and, and, you know, amend the motion of the Deutsch and, the Deutsch edits to today's 1212 draft policy, which includes, I think, much of what we talked about, but I would like everyone to make sure you're, you're okay with that and look at it. I just wanted to, an easier way for us to vote on this because there was a lot of discussion on it. So if there's any discussion, we can entertain discussion on, on, on what I'm talking about now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify.
Yes, please.
The 1212 draft includes all of the board members' earlier revisions and Mr. Deutsch's revisions. I tinkered with them a little just to make them read, read more smoothly.
Ms. Jesse.
I, I think I called Mary or sent a note to her to say, I really appreciate all the edits and the changes. And I, I just want to take this time to say thank you to you because this has been an enormous amount of work. And, and, you know, working with us is rather difficult, I'm sure, sometimes because we keep changing our mind, and we don't always read things beforehand. And I just want to tell you, I think you did a very professional job on this. Thank you. And thank you also to our parliamentarian. Thank you.
Did you have a statement, Mr., or a comment?
Well, I was just going to say procedurally, Mr. Chairman, as you indicated, the pending motion is actually the Deutsch version.
Yes.
So you, for example, could, if you chose, move to substitute for that.
With the 1212 one.
Version.
Correct. And, and, and that's what I want all you guys to make sure, if that's, because we cleaned up the 134, which was the last week one, which we had the problems with, that was the Deutsch edits. So please take a look at that, and if you need a minute or so, please take the time to do that. I know we got that in the email.
Mr. Chairman, if you look at, to make it easier reading, everything is highlighted in here that's new from the earlier.
Yes, thank you. And while they're doing that, I, I just want to echo Ms. Jesse's comments. Thank you for, I mean, we're wrapping up this 100 series, I think, tonight, hopefully. But on this specific policy, I wanted this, you know, I'm excited to, to, you know, look at this and, and, and recognize that I think we tried to include everyone's concerns as much as possible to make this read in, in a way that's very functional and, and can be handled in an appropriate way. So I truly appreciate the work from our parliamentarian and from our division council, Mary McGowan. Thank you so much. Good. So I'll, I'll make a motion to substitute the 121218 draft policy 134 for the 134 board with Deutsch edits. So I'd like to amend, substitute motion. So I motioned that we substitute the 1212 draft for the postponed motion from last week. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
To, to complete it, you also need to add the deletion of former policy 133 and Regulation 133-1.
Okay. Is that written somewhere? So I, so, okay, I'll amend it with what Mary just said, because we're deleting the old one, basically, right? We're deleting, yeah.
That's the book.
Oh, the, up here in yellow? Oh, got it.
Recommended action.
The recommended action is in there.
Got it. Sorry. I should read that. I'm sorry. That the Prince William County Board, so I motioned the Prince William County Board approve the adoption of the revised policy 134, citizen participation, deletion of former policy 133, citizen comment, regulation 133.1, procedures for citizen participation, both of which are incorporated into policy 134. With the, the drafted 1212 version, amending, substituting for the version that we postponed from last week.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, although I do have a question for Ms. McGowan.
Sure, so we can open up for discussion, I have a second. Go ahead.
Okay, so the one, the only thing that, and I think we're probably okay on it, but I just want to confirm with Ms. McGowan, there's been some issues regarding the Attorney General's opinion as far as what, about limitations on addressing specific situations or specific personnel, basically says, yeah, we can't stop people from doing that. I just want to confirm that the way this is, this is written, we're not saying that we can stop people from doing that.
Correct. We, we deleted language that referred to personal attacks.
Right.
Which is what the AG's office addressed.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
Good comment. Any others? Mr. Deutsch.
Mr. Chairman, I like a lot of what has all happened here, and I appreciate the amendments drafted by the attorney and the parliamentarian. I was wondering if people would be open to adding amendment three off of Mr. Bolsh's amendments. The current draft that we're discussing here, the 1212 draft, means that we have to vote to guarantee that people can speak on agenda items. The amendment three guarantees anybody who signs up can speak on an agenda item. And I think that was what we were trying to get to in the discussion that we had last meeting. And so I think amendment three is in the spirit of that conversation and would move that we include amendment three with this.
Dr. Walts?
Gil.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gil.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to address Mr. Deutsch, and actually, Mr. Bolsh or Mary can confirm this. I think what, and I, I think what you're talking about is the wording where it says at the discretion of the chairman-at-large and with agreement of the majority of the school board. I think that we can, I think the intent is that we can do that with, basically, the discretion of the chairman.
The way it's written.
And consensus, consensus of the board. I don't think we need to go through an actual vote on that. Is that correct?
Is that correct, Mary?
No.
Parliamentarian on that.
The, the language of 1212 specifically says, at the discretion of the chairman-at-large and with the agreement of majority of the school board. Now, that can be done by unanimous consent. The chair could ask, is there any objection to doing it? But technically, if it was adopted with this language, the chairman independently could not do it at his discretion. It would have to have the approval of the majority of the school board.
And, and I did that to give some control back to the board after...
I think I'm okay with that.
Any, anything else?
And just to respond to, to Mr. Deutsch, really, I tried to take, lift from amendment three into, integrate that into the yellow comments on draft 1212. Basically, this is a new addition to guarantee that citizens who speak up, who identify an agenda item to speak on, get to speak before there's action on the agenda item. And the scheduling of the, of how to do that and when to do it is, is going to be up to the board and the chair. So if you can't fit everybody in the 30 minutes, and you've got an agenda item that's four items down, you might want to put another speaking slot. The board can do that speaking slot in before that item. It'll give you some discretion as to how to move it around.
Ms. Satterwhite.
And along those lines, that was some confusion I had too, because when you look at the first paragraph of section 2E, it says at the end of the paragraph, speakers will be heard in the order in which their names were submitted to the clerk. Those who signed up in advance will be heard prior to those whose names were placed on the list that night. But yet, when you get into the middle of the second paragraph, we're talking about all who signed up to speak on a specific agenda item will speak at some point during the meeting. And then it talks about, it goes on to say, speakers on non-agenda items who cannot be heard within the initial allotted period may be allowed to speak after all their business on the board agenda's been completed. We're hinting that we're going to take people out of order, but yet, the beginning paragraph, we're saying we're going to take people in order. So I feel like we're contradicting ourselves.
We can fix that by just making a reference in paragraph D to, subject to the, subject to the, to the limitations in paragraph E.
Both of these are in paragraph E, though.
I'm sorry.
Both of these are in paragraph E. Both are...
Right, both of these I was concerned about are in paragraph E. The first paragraph, at the end of the first paragraph and the end of the second paragraph. It seems like it contradicts each other, because at the end of the first paragraph of, of E, it says that will, speakers will be heard in the order their names appear, and those who signed up in advance will be heard prior to those whose names were placed on the list that night. Then when we get to the middle of the second paragraph, we're talking about citizens who signed up to speak on a specific item will speak at some point prior to that vote. Then at the discretion of the chairman with agreement of the board, speakers on non-agenda items who can't be heard at the beginning may be allowed to speak at the end. But we're hinting that we might get people out of order to allow them to speak to that agenda item. So I feel like we're contradicting ourselves in the policy. How do we adjust this?
May I make a technical suggestion?
Sure.
If, in the first paragraph, you, you could simply say, before the third paragraph, third sentence where it said speakers will be heard, you could simply say, except as provided in the next paragraph, comma, speakers will be heard, if that is the desire of the board.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I think you need that.
Oh, Mr. Tren, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think the confusion of the language is a result of the fact that we've got two competing goals here, one, one to give people who sign up first the opportunity to speak first, and one to give people who want to, and the goal to give people who want to speak before a vote on a subject, an opportunity, if that list is long, you've got compete, you've got competing goals. So I think we're just going to have to figure it out as we go. I mean, it's an adjustment that the chairman's got to work with.
Yeah, I mean, I think the adjustment that Mr. Balk recommended addresses Allison's concerns. And, and I think, you know, recognize, I think it's important for all of us to recognize this is a document that can constantly evolve. And we could always come back to it and say, hey, you know, this didn't really fly the way we thought it would, and let's go back and readjust it. It's one policy. We can always, always take a look at it. So Allison, would you offer the amendment to, or the amendment to make the change of adding that to that line, paragraph?
Personally, I'm not comfortable with the way this is written. I, I would rather see all of our speakers speak at the front of the meeting. That's what I'd like to see. So I'm not comfortable with this at all. And no, I don't want to make the motion because right now I, I can't vote for this because I want all our speakers to speak at the beginning of the meeting. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I think we can, if discussion's over, we can move to vote on my motion. We had a second by Mr. Trenum. And we're not going to make the change. Yes, Ms.?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Are, are you voting on the motion as it reads on the screen now, or are we amending this motion? If so, I need the new motion.
So, no, we're not. We're actually, no one offered a new motion. So my motion still stands, which is that, that we are substituting the 121218 draft with, as I read it, so as it says on the screen, right, the recommended action for the 134 board with Deutsch edits.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to move the parliamentarian's amendment.
In, in, in which one was that, Mr. Deutsch?
The, the one that clarified the conflicting paragraphs in paragraph...
So, so you want to adopt that language in, in the paragraph, the one that he recommended?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I, do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay. Can we, we'll, we'll take a vote on that change in the paragraph?
Yes.
Okay. Please vote on that. Or, you know what? I can, I can do this by consensus if, if, well, can I?
Since there is obviously an objection, you could, by unanimous consent.
So we have to vote by it? Okay. So we'll vote.
Are we voting on the amendment to the...
Yes, we're voting on just the addition of Mr. Balk's recommended line to clarify the, yeah, yeah. Mary, we'll get to the language on that.
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm fine, just because what came up was actually the motion itself. So I'm fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's fine. So when she gives us the vote, realize this is, to vote for that extra line.
The vote, the vote is five yes, one no, two absent. Motion passed.
Okay. So now we'll take the vote on the, the substituting the new version for last week's version, so we'll vote on that, to adopt that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch.
Speaking of the motion. I, I would like to second Ms. Satterwhite's comments. I think it is important that everyone be allowed to speak at the front, I think, of a meeting. I believe that we, a number of us were, have been at board supervisors' meetings where everybody who wants to speak has been allowed to speak. And I think it's the, the fair, the open process to the, to the public and citizenry. And I was, I was hopeful we could have included that in here. And so that's still my concern with this policy.
Thank you. Please vote. A vote on the amendment. Are you putting up a vote, Debbie?
I don't have a motion.
It's the one we...
It's, it's the...
I need, I need the, the motion in writing.
I think the, the parliamentarian will bring it to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's process is so inefficient, so inefficient.
It's ridiculous.
While we're, while we're waiting on that.
Sure. No, as you can say, while we're waiting on that, I just wanted to talk to, I think we are meeting intent. What we're doing here does give everybody the opportunity to speak. And I think we're very, the Board of County Supervisors, when you bring up that thing, the Board of County Supervisors actually has separate signup sheets for each topic. So, in which case, you, that, so they manage them. So it's not a, you're on the first, you, you show up first, you get there first. It's, so that's, so that's a little bit different there. So we, we are trying to accommodate that, but they do do that differently, unless we are going to go to separate signup sheets for each individual agenda item, which I don't know that we want to get there, go there. I think we do, we do make sure, we're making sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I, so I, I, I agree with that, Mr. Trentum. And, and you know, the spirit with which we've been running these meetings since April is to ensure that everyone actually, I don't think we've ever delayed anyone to speak since all the board meetings since April. And so that's something I'd, you know, the spirit of this board, I think, would, would like to continue that in that way.
The vote is four yes, two no, two absent. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to 2202, which actually just leads into 2203, which we, Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, this is for action. This is a, Willie, you want to do this one? This is your appointment?
Sure. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Elena Wamsley as representative for the Coles District, Crystal Thrower as representative for the Aquon District, and Justin Pago, my apologies, as representative for the Woodbridge District on the Career and Technical Education Advisory Council for a term effective December 12, 2018 through June 30, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. Trentum, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed.
We'll go to 2204, Safe Schools Advisory Council appointments for Gainesville. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Jeffrey Bergman as representative for the Gainesville District, and Maria Johnson as representative for the Woodbridge District on the Safe Schools Advisory Council for a two-year term ending June 30, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. Trentum, second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion passed.
Ms. McGowan?
Mr. Chairman, having consulted with the parliamentarian, we missed a step here. There still needs to be a vote on the main motion. The, the main motion would be that the Prince, that the Prince William County School Board approved the adoption of the substituted policy 134. That's the 21218 one. And deletion of former policy 133, Citizen Comment and Regulation 133-1, Procedures for Citizen Participation as amended.
So I will make the motion that the Prince William County School Board approve the adoption of the revised policy 134, Citizen Participation, the deletion of the former policy 133, Citizen Comment, Regulation 133-1, Procedures for Citizen Participation as amended.
To include the substituted.
To include the substituted motion, draft version for 1212.
Second.
And I have a second from Mr. Trentum. Discussion. Now we'll vote on the official thing. Thank you for the clarification. That's my fault, I apologize. I got ahead of myself there.
I'm sorry, Dr. Latif, would you say that one more time? I'm trying to type.
It's basically the recommended action, and you can put as amended for the 1212 draft, correct? Or as amended with the new language in the 1212?
I think as amended is fully adequate.
Outstanding, sir, as amended. Love it. I know what we're going to do without you, my friend. You'll get to go home, you'll get to go home in a nice hour.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll move to 2205, Special Education Advisory Council appointment for Coles District. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Sarah Pickin as representative for the Coles District on Special Education Advisory Committee for a two-year term.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
And discussion? And please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll move to 2206. This is an adoption of the resolution regarding the joint efforts with the Board of County Supervisors relative to the acquisition of land for school needs, an external audit of county and school methodologies for the planning purposes of portable classroom elimination plan and reduction of class size. And this stems from our board-to-board meeting from the other evening. And so I'll make the motion that the Prince William County School Board adopt a resolution regarding joint efforts with the Board of County Supervisors relative to the acquisition of land for school needs, an external audit of the county and school methodologies for planning purposes, the portable classroom elimination plan, and the reduction of class sizes. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Discussion.
Vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
2207, adoption of the revised renamed policy, Policy 170. And I think if we do this, this is our last of the 100 series, Ms. McGowan?
Oh, yes.
Outstanding. I think we'll, I'll turn this over to Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board adopt the amended draft of the revised renamed policy 170, committees, advisory boards, task forces, and councils, and delete former regulation 170-1 committees and councils.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Second, second by Mr. Trentum. And just, Allison, and so we'll, discussion, so which one is the one yours, which was yours?
So that would be the Satterwhite amended, and it strikes the line, in the absence or failure of a recommendation for appointment by any individual board member, the school board shall make the appointment. It strikes that line.
Okay. So I just wanted to ask this question, because I'm, you know, relatively new to the board. What happens if, what, how do you guys envision the, an opening on a council that stays open five months, six months, seven months? What, how do we approach that? Gil?
Mr. Chairman, the way it is, I mean, the onus is on, the onus is on the school board member to, I mean, the staff has in, has, has, in the past, will offer to help you find somebody if you, if you can't find something. It's up to the board member to determine whether they want that assistance or not. Ultimately, if you don't find somebody, it just sits open. I mean, that's not the best, but I think the way it was written with, just by having the board take over that responsibility for, by, by having the board appoint somebody, I think that could cause contention. It doesn't talk about, you know, any kind of time limits. You also have the issue of, you know, what, what happens if somebody's serving on the board, and then they need to resign, resign for some, some reason, and there's a whole lot behind that would go on, a lot of potential areas of conflict and.
Sure. Is there a reasonable time that you expect someone, or do you, just the board member has a discretion, just not do it at all if they so feel such?
It's really at the discretion of the board member. Like I said, Dr. Waltz and his staff always offers up to, to find somebody if, if it stays open for too long. But.
Okay.
At, at some point, that's the board members, it's kind of like the board members representative to that.
Yeah, so it's the board member's responsibility to fulfill that duty to deliver on that appointment.
Yes.
And not doing so is?
You're not doing your job.
Not doing your job. Okay. All right. I don't have any objection to the motion. Any further discussion? Please vote. This is on, and just for clarification, we're voting on P. 170, Red Line, 121218, Satterwhite amended. And we have a second by Mr. Trentum. Did I do that right? Thank you.
The vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
So I want to applaud Mary McGowan and the staff for completing the 100 series. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Maybe we can get you a certificate, an award, positively PWCS. We will move on to board matters. Let's start with Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be quick. Last week, I got to attend probably one of my favorite Christmas holidays, which is the Osborne Park, Brentsville Patriot combined handles the society performance, the Hill Performing Arts Center. Beautiful event with full orchestra, full choir, incredible soloists. As note, the, on the caliber of the soloists, one of the, the tenor was unable to attend that day because he had to be in practices for the funeral concerts the next day for President, former President George H. W. Bush. So we've got top-notch music talent, and it's a whole lot of fun. Last night, attended the Christmas concert over at Colgan High School. Wonderful performance with the different, mostly strings and other orchestra groups, couple of orchestral musical groups as well. A lot of fun. One of those situations where not everybody's a fan of snow days because it messed with their practices the day before. So, you know, while, while some people are all in favor of them every once in a while, people aren't quite the big fans. But also, just wanted to give a shout out to the Teachers of the Year and Principals of the Year. I will refrain from reading all of the Coles District members of the Teacher of the Year, but it's kind of cool. About 40% of the Principals of the Year are all from Coles District, so shout outs Neil Beach, Osborne Park High School, and Mary Jane Boynton, Parkside Middle School, Catherine Forges, Coles Elementary, and Sheila Huckstein over at Saunders Middle School. All incredible people, and look forward to celebrating with all the Teachers and Principals of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for staying up with us tonight. Couple events I want to highlight. It's been a busy couple weeks, but these are great events that I've been to. So I want to first recognize Mr. Carbone and the Forest Park staff for the 18th Annual Breakfast with Santa. That was held this past Saturday. I believe the numbers were over 2,700 people attended, not just from the Potomac District, from the Coles District, from Neapsco. I, I met people that had come down from Fairfax in Maryland and all these great different events. This is the first time I actually had the pleasure of working it. I've always gone and, you know, done the, the pictures with Santa Claus, but Mr. Carbone put me in a different station. So I started off at the gingerbread-making station, which his wife runs and makes a couple hundred gingerbread houses prepared for the students, went to the pancake-flipping area, did the storytime with Mrs. Claus, and ended with a awesome performance of Polar Express, which I know Dr. Waltz saw as well during the week at Forest Park. So I want to again thank Forest Park for that, a great event. Multiculture Night was the night before at Potomac Middle School. Jam-packed, a couple hundred families there, learning and reflecting on the various student cultures of that building. The day before, I had the pleasure of visiting Henderson and Patty Elementary. Henderson students visited multiple classrooms, working on deep-sea creatures, and then Patty was doing buddy-reading time. Before that, I did attend three different government classes at Forest Park High School with students, did Q and A sessions. The parking lot stuff came up a lot, the changes to the grading scale. I do want to say I take you seriously when you're up here, because you made a recommendation a couple sessions ago, when you visited Potomac High School, about healthy lunch choices. So I followed up with our team there, and they have added some new stuff in those cafeterias. So I do value you, so thank you for being here. Covington Harper had Donuts with Dads. I want to thank Dunkin' Donuts at Dumfries for donating all those donuts at that event, a great event for those families and being there as well. Grand Park, two nights before, had a parent camp night. This is a camp and a tradition that they've been starting, different sessions. And this session this evening was focused on internet safety. Want to thank the Prince William County Police for participating in that. Great event. The Saturday before that, I attended the Vex Robotics Tournament with Ms. Jessie, Dr. Latif, and Ms. Williams at Woodbridge High School. Great event. And then I also was able, right after the last school board meeting, we went to two events. I went to Montclair, had their family fitness night, which was.
I went to Montclair, had their family fitness night, which was again a decent turnout there and great family participation. And then the Swan's Creek Multiculture Night that they had at their building. So a lot of great events happening, couple more this week, only a few more next week, and then it'll be the upcoming holiday break. So I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'm not gonna name everybody, name all individually, but congratulations to all the schools of excellence, number of them in the Brentsville District. And once again, y'all do a great job, and most of it's year in, year out. So once again, congratulations, thank that. I want to make a specific thank you to our PWEA folks. I have received a steady stream of grief over the last several months for the lack of wearing red. And when I pointed out I don't have red, they corrected that. So thank you. I guess now I'm obligated to wear it at some point. Very nice. Thank you. Exactly. And finally, on a more serious note, I want to say thank you to Rabbi Pearlstein for the Hanukkah lesson this evening, and also for saying the invocation, we discussed with him earlier. I'm not positive that this is the first time we've ever had a rabbi do the invocation, but it's certainly the first time in the 12 years that I, in the 11 years that I've been on the board, so I, and I think it is. So I do appreciate that. And also thank you for Mr. Deutsch for giving up his invocation, invitation this month to me so we could make that happen. Really appreciate that. To everyone that's traveling in the upcoming holiday season, travel safe, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, and everything. Have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I got to take part in one of my favorite events this past Saturday, Santa Cop, which was put on by the Fraternal Order of Police, the Battlefield Lodge, and hosted for breakfast by the Park West Lions Club. I want to thank everyone who was involved for the, all of the help that they did, and for the 50 students that they helped to have a very Merry Christmas and happy holidays. I want to thank the multiple student groups and volunteers and all of the uniformed officers who were there. It was quite a parade of officers. For anyone who was alarmed by all of the sirens around Manassas Mall on Saturday morning, it was Santa Cop. And I also attended the Gravely Elementary School, PTO Holiday Bazaar. It was great to visit with friends and parents. And then, as you heard, I was at Hilton High School a week ago for the Take Your Legislator to School Day, and not that I'm a legislator, but I'm here for the school board, had an absolutely wonderful visit, and it was also my first time to go to the planetarium. So of our current school board members, how many of you have been to the planetarium? Okay, a few of you. All right. There are ongoing, and Dr. Walt, I know, because the planetarium director told me that you've been to the planetarium, and that you're going back soon for a visit. And so I'm going to be going on Saturday night. I'm looking forward to that. They have ongoing programs and great family programs, so I'm really looking forward to that. So while I was at Hilton High School, I observed an English 10 class, great debates with the class, observed oceanography, and learned a little bit and helped some, had a great time in Ms. Clark's class. And then I observed, actually, no, then I taught ninth-grade English class, and I actually swore them all in as school board members with my own little version of a swearing-in. Part of that was I will not hassle Ms. Satterwhite, and I will have fun. And, and Mr. Trentum, you would like this, they actually had a budget lesson in English class. So I gave them a budget to work with. They learned about how much some things cost, actually used the Critical Unmet Needs List for pulling some cost of items. They were actually quite shocked at how expensive some of the items are, and geared it toward high school. So it was a lot of fun, had a good time with the students there. I want to thank the Brentsville District High School students from the turf management program for the absolutely gorgeous reef, and they gave us each one of these gorgeous reefs tonight, and want to thank them for that. It's absolutely beautiful, and I appreciate the work that went into those. I also want to thank PWEA for my red scarf. I will wear it. And I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday, and this is our last meeting of this calendar year.
At the last board meeting, I wanted to recognize Molly Rosenberg for all that she does with our board briefs. She has a remarkable talent, and she can take what you've told her, and maybe written some notes, and make it into an actual feature. So she's not here tonight, but I did bring a gift for her, and I want to share it with the board. And I will take this gift to, to her colleagues in the back at the end, because those are the people that she works with, and these are people behind the scenes who do great things. When I was a principal, I think I gave away about 100 cups of Demetats Cups every Friday for people behind the scenes. And so this cup is for Molly Rosenberg, and I just want to put it up for the cameras since she's not here, to make sure she sees. I think I put too much wrapping paper on it. Sorry. But, to Molly Rosenberg, and I know that we have a new person in charge of communications, but I have to tell you, Keith, you guys do wonderful work. And you know, they've received many, many awards, and I don't know if we can put them up for Positively P, because who would tape them if they came out? But I do think that they need to be recognized because they do wonderful work. And when I go to the website and see all the work that they're doing, I'm just so very, very impressed. And I also wanted to congratulate Woodbridge High School. They worked hard to become a school of excellence, and I'm really pleased with that. And I wanted to also just give a shout out to the PWC, the, the parents who are working to make that school a school that kids come to and feel good in. I talked about independence, and that it's the school where you walk in, you feel good, and you feel good in that school in spite of the fact that it doesn't have all the renovations. Avney, Heather Avney has changed the footprint of that school and has done a phenomenal job. I also want to thank Mr. George Washington, the athletic director, I think this is his last year there, and for inviting me to the football games, because I never went to one before. And also to Gary Wertham, who is a coach for Woodbridge and has perhaps, has gets more scholarships for kids on that football team than many coaches in the state of Virginia. In fact, last, the last couple of days, he drove a student to Connecticut, and overnight, he and his son, I just want to say, Gary, I appreciate everything that you do for that school. You do phenomenal work. Thank you.
Thank you. So wonderful. Allison, thank you for pointing out the Hilton Planetarium. The director over there is Tony Kilgore, who is, I'm proud to say, a graduate of my high school, Boardman High School in Youngstown, Ohio, which is Mr. Klein's wife's high school as well, correct? And he went to Youngstown State University, and Boardman High School has one of the best planetariums in the state of Ohio, and, and I think that may have been what helped inspire his career path in Youngstown State University as well. And, and my second grader was there for a field trip on Monday and thoroughly enjoyed it. It's a great facility. I'd like to applaud Governor Ralph Northam's budget. It adds about $250-plus million to K through 12 if passed. It also, you know, he's also pushing Stanley, Senator Stanley and Suravel's project to help fund schools that are falling down, another 80 million. There's some great monies in there. There's a 5% raise for teachers in there. And, and I'm proud to have supported his efforts as they work through the budget and work with Secretary Carney on the needs of the community and the folks in the Commonwealth of Virginia when it comes to education. And I think the governor has taken this on and has made this a top priority, and I'm very excited to see how this will work out as we go through our own budget season. So I would recommend that all folks in the community, in the county, please talk to your legislators to consider supporting the governor's budget, which has a lot of great stuff in there for education, and would really help us out a lot here in the county to do the things we want to do to keep this a world-class education. Thank Rabbi Pearlstein for the invocation this, I want to say this morning, it seemed so long ago, but earlier this evening. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year to everyone, and have a great evening. Thank you so much. Motion to adjourn, or we're adjourned.